Okay. For everyone's information, this meeting is being livestreamed down on YouTube. I would ask the clerk do the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Hagen DePew.
Here.
Councilman Hewitt. Abstain. Councilman Paddock.
Here.
Supervisor Bate.
Here. First, a quick announcement. Here's we had a backup in the men's room. The women's room is working fine, so there was an out of order sign on the men's room. My apologies. And so we would just ask that you all use the ladies' room this evening if you need to. Again, our apologies. Must have just happened and I just we just discovered it when we came here. First item on our agenda tonight is a published for local law number four. This is the local law is zoning map of the town of Rochester shall be amended to reflect that the property contained in Ulster County tax map. Known as SBL seventy six point four dash four seventy six dash four dash four point one and seventy six dash four dash four point two. Eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road, Carhaux, New York and located in the low density residential R two zoning district. Shall be rezoned to be located in the residential agricultural AR three zoning district. We've established a public hearing to be held tonight at six thirty PM. I would ask the applicant, if you'd like to join us. And if you could just give a brief description of your your project. And why you have requested this zoning change for the for the public's information, the board has already seen your presentation, so you could just give a brief summary of what you're proposing.
Absolutely. So we're proposing that the reason occurs and we can rejuvenate our trees that we have. There you have black walnuts, we have a lot of other plants that we'd like to rejuvenate and to see if we can maintain that. If we can, we would like to actually grow other types of plants as well. And I should also mention, we will be seeking ag district. Intuition and we'll apply for that much.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this hearing? Yes, sir.
I didn't sign it, sign in shape, but I think.
That's quite all right.
You know, Rick Jones, resident of the town of Rochester, he also happened to be on the planning board. But that's not up here as a private citizen, the planning board already gave some indication of how they feel about this. I'm highly in support of it. Both zones allow for the use that Kosh Tuv and his family intend to use it for. However, the AR three will enhance his ability to seek funding. Certainly consistent with the town's long term plan in terms of preserving and getting where possible to agricultural land, formal formally declared and designated agricultural land. So that's in effect what Kosh Tuv is asking for. I had a long meeting with him just to get an idea, went through his document and it's very nice to see that he wants to restore some of the land, the land and what's on the land now, which consists of, as you mentioned, black walnut trees, pear trees and a number of other types of fruit trees. We'd like to restore them to usefulness and also restore the very fertile soil and be able to use it to raise crops. And to be in essence, a a small farmer contributing to the what makes Rochester a beautiful farming community here in Ulster County. So I'm in extreme support to see this happen. There was some discussion, I will divert go a little bit off topics. I said it was not here as a planning board, but the planning board did note that AR three and R two allows farming. And I think it should be noted that yes, that's true. The AR three allows the applicant to seek and utilize a lot of the funding that's available as an agricultural, strict agricultural district. Both the support from the New York State Agricultural Department, Ulster County Agricultural, agriculturally oriented departments. And so that just enhances his ability, his family's ability to develop this as as true farming. So.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
Actually, lots of the planning board meeting and there was no recommendation from the board. They talked about setting a precedent precedent. And on this property, this is that a tent or site is well advertised. It is off of the rail trail. When you go back to the rail trail. So it is visible from the rail trails. It advertises the rail trail. The garbage comes to the house, which is outside of the gate all the time. There is a wood stove and my point is none of these things are permitted. I am strongly opposed to setting this precedent because that you're doing someone a favor and grants come in R two. And you can farm, you can rehab the property. But to reward someone that's done something that is clearly against code and if anybody's seen the property, there are things visible. So again, I am opposed for those reasons.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm David Longsbury, one of the joining owners on Birmingham Road. And I had a couple of questions. Haven't heard too much about the project until the letter came in the mail and I'm just wondering whether one is whether the change of designation makes it harder or easier to possibly subdivide the land into the future or it has no effect on it.
I I can actually answer that question. This will make it a currently in the R two, it is two acres per parcel with the AR three, it will change to three acres per parcel. So it would allow less plots to be formed on the property if if it was if it were to be subdivided. But currently it is R two, which allows two acres per lot, AR three allows a minimum, I'm sorry, of two acres. AR three is a minimum of three acres per lot. So to add your specific question, it would it would lessen, it wouldn't. The ability to subdivide would still be there, but the number of lots that could be created would be less.
Okay, good. And I couldn't help but notice in the application, it includes the phrase that not requesting land use as event space at present. And so to me, this perhaps is opening the door to the future possibility of event space on that property. And so I'm wondering what your thinking is about that at this time.
It's a public hearing to us, but it's up to the board if we want to allow him to answer. Does the board have any issue? I have no issues with him answering.
Actually, I can address or answer your question and perhaps I can. Yeah, I'll stand back. But I can even potentially address the ladies' comment as well because to your question about having any special uses as that's designated by the town code. We are not looking for any of that at this point. And the reason that based as such is because that is a special use. So if we were ever even think about it or somebody else to do it, even in R two or AR three, they would have to come to the planning board and the town board for cool. So we and about one thing I've noticed in the comments previously was mention of two aspects about using the site as tentor and trash being there. We have not used the site or tentor in about two years now. And the reason being is we don't want to and we have a tent there and we have left it there because we don't need to remove it from our land. And we own it. About the trash. Since we don't have the inside, we throw our trash, we don't burn our trash, we don't put it in the ground or anything, we use services provided that we utilize and for the trash. And I would actually appreciate if anybody has questions, please, we could reach out to us. We don't need to actually hide it. I hope that it gets to us. I've got a couple more. I can send you their sign.
Go ahead, sir. It's 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 mostly a comment session rather than a question, but feel free to ask and we'll see if we can answer.
I just haven't heard much about it, so I'd like to learn more along the way. One of the phrases in the application is to provide access for non-native viable floor. And I didn't understand what that implies or what what you're hoping to do there. I mean, your term non-native is often something to beware that you don't really want to introduce non-native floor. So I'm wondering.
Yeah, if you'd like to say which what's your plan is with the farming, yeah, with the farming.
No, absolutely. So to your question, I'm assuming you're alluding to invasive species. And no, that's not, I wanted to qualify it such that I'm very clear that I don't want to later say, oh, no, these things grow here. But I would like to grow and see our items that we can utilize, which are actually used and grown in other forms here locally as well. And if you go to, I can provide you a list, actually, somebody provided to me, Boris Samuelson from Ag District. There are a lot of people who are growing different things. I want to be very clear on it coming up later that we will be going and trying to do those things. I can be very specific if you need names of ideas.
Is it the hope to sell agricultural products from this land?
So let me step, I know a lot of people mentioned the project. We don't have a project in mind at this point. What we have is we want to attempt to resuscitate and re-immigrate what we have. A lot of the land when we moved six years ago, so it was cleared and it was never used. So we want to actually grow things and if we can actually grow, we want to be able to see what we can do about it. And to just to get to that point, we might need need some funding, et cetera. And then we'll decide, but no, we're not trying, we live here. We are not living somewhere else or visiting and we want it to be a place where our son can go as well. We have a.
I guess my comment would be I don't have a problem with the agricultural designation. Have some problem if that continues towards event space. Or others, some kind of special use. Once I've lived there for twenty six years and one of the biggest attractions of the neighborhood is that it's very quiet. It's very dark at night. It's a very pleasant place to live. And certainly more fruit and nut trees are not going to harm that aspect. But there are some other things that that could harm our.
If I could say one more thing. I actually appreciate you saying that, sir, because the where I grew up is a very different place. It's highly muted. It's both light and dirt and everything. And we want to bring our son here to actually have what you just mentioned. So we are not trying to actually draw anything or use noise creating or lights or things like that. So we definitely try to avoid that. And you have our address, if you'd like to come, we'd be happy to have you.
Hey, anything else, sir? Please, please.
Will this change the tax status of the property?
It will not. It will not. He he has the ability. You have to earn a certain amount of income to apply for an ag abatement. But it is income generated and the income must be generated by agriculture. So but it doesn't change the tax status of the property. It is a lessening or a rebate of the taxes, much like it's an exemption. It's an agricultural exemption, much like senior exemptions or veterans exemptions. It's still the same tax status, but there is a limit that is exempt potentially, but in order to do that, you have to make and I, Aaron, you may know the number.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand dollars of average over the course of three years. I think if you're less than ten acres, if it's more, then it's less.
So it has to be a sizable farming operation before that is achieved.
And also I think the district has no impact on that.
Correct. Any parcel could apply for that if it was being used in an agricultural cases. Many of our larger lots that you see people hay. Part of the reason that they're hanging it is for the ag exemption that they can get because of having someone hay their property.
May I just add one more thing? To address that, I also look at that. It actually can be either for our due zoning or AR two, so anybody who's farming can actually apply for that example. Reduction in taxes. So the zoning does not create a tax.
Correct. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? If not, I have a couple of letters that we received that I will read. You receive by email. Two more came in right after you left and I. So the first is an email from Ren Hawkeye. He writes, I am writing in support and I'm going to embarrass myself and apologize on your pronunciation of your name. Katso? Katso? And Rupa?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Well, who wished to rezon their property at eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road, Carhaux, New York, from R two to AR three? I believe in their project and aspirations to increase the agriculture density to their land, simultaneously enhancing the town as an epicenter for farming. No farms, no food, grow local. And the second is from Douglas Romanet. Romanet, I'm sorry. I'd like to take the opportunity to voice my general support for the rezoning of eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road from the current R two residential zoning to AR three agricultural residential zoning. AR three zone already represents a significant area of land along the northern side of the Rondell Creek and indeed a large area of the general zoning of the town of Rochester. The lower density of AR three is conducive to the preservation of agricultural lands while maintaining lower density residential development and this such seems to be appropriate to the area. The third was received from Turu Iljin. Please count me in favor of the request to rezon the properties at eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road from R two to AR three. Parcel seventy six point four dash four dash one is shown at over thirty six acres and parcel seventy six point four dash four dash two at five acres. There are many factors in support of this decision. This would change their status from residential to agricultural residential, which would be consistent with the majority of the other large properties along the Rondell Creek. This is also consistent with the significant agriculture heritage of the valley and the local comprehensive plans as well. The properties are located along the creek waterway and should be protected for farming, considering many other properties are not so favorable for farming. Residential use in general should not be encouraged at lower elevations prone to flooding. Considering that our town is undergoing a massive surge in residential development and pressure from housing demands, there should be some balance sought in retaining large lots with agricultural potential. In particular, in these cases that are requested by the property owners themselves. Thank you for this opportunity to be involved in the process that affects our community. Next is from Julie and Eric Burger. My husband and I are long-term residents of Acward and have lived here for nearly two decades. The town's historic rural and farming community is one of the reasons we've enjoyed living here with our families. To that end, I would like to state our support for the proposed zoning change for the property at eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road, Carhaux, New York to the farming residential status from the current R two residential zoning to AR three agricultural residential zoning as it is in keeping with the rural heart of our community in town. And finally, from Regina A. Secinger and Brian Scott. I'm ready to support for the proposal for zoning changes for eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road, Carhaux, New York. It is actually a refreshing change that someone wants to revive a former local farm property back again to its origins. Over the last ten years, we have lived here, we have enjoyed the town the way it is and look forward to maintaining its agriculture-based heritage. Please note our family's support of the proposed rezoning from current R two residential zoning to AR three zone. We also received responses for our referrals to the Ulster County Planning Board. Their referral response back is a no county impact, which means that local determination. We also received a letter from the planning board. The town of Rochester Planning Board received the referral from your office for the amendment of the zoning map of the town of Rochester for the parcels seventy six point four dash four dash one and seventy six point four dash four dash two located at eighteen nineteen Birmingham Road to rezon the parcels from R two to AR three. The planning board has no difficulty with the proposed zoning changes. The board defers responsibility to the town board as stated in the law. Those are our written comments. I will check again if anybody in the public wishes to speak. Okay, hearing none. I asked for motion close.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. I have a question for Mary Lou. Okay, do this, we can speak after the public here has closed.
We can.
Yes, we can. Because this is the public hearings for the public to make their comments.
Okay.
And then when you're considering whether.
Because I have commented to something that was brought up and I just.
It's probably more appropriate to do it after.
Okay.
That's the more.
Okay, I'll second. So I have a motion, a second, close the public here. Fall in favor. I opposed abstain. Okay.
It was brought up about tent and I don't know how old this is, but it is from the internet and it does pertain to the property. I just wonder before we grant this change, if because it was brought up, if we should ask them to take it down. You hadn't used the tent to set for two years. I just, but I want to make sure with the attorney that should we take this down, then it's not considered. Take the tent or site down.
Off the internet?
No, not off the internet, physically take it down. I didn't know that's in their purview. We hasn't used it in two years, but.
He said they have a tent that's their own that's there that they use.
This is, this is a site.
No, right, right, it was, but he said he's not using anymore. So are you asking him to take down the tent or are you asking him to ask Tenter to please remove his listing?
Or both? Both. I'd like to see that it's not there and therefore can't be misconstrued as something being done illegally. And tent or then if it's removed from there, then obviously they're not going to get calls. I don't know how the rest of the boards to that.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we also could ask Mr. Davis to
well.
to review it.
I I would like.
If it is a code violation, it's it's a it's a admitted, it's a a violation and it would be Mr. Davis.
Can we just take it away? I would like to hear customs.
Sure, absolutely. But so, yeah, with the website, we just haven't looked at it, so we can. So it's not owned by somebody else, so it's personal property. And we haven't, I'm happy to have the town come by if they want to look at it, but I don't think there's any code violation.
I I am not sure why we would ask a resident to take a test.
Well, I wouldn't, but I'm just saying because it was advertised.
You're saying to give a a level of comfort to the neighbors.
Comfort to the neighbors, but it's not.
But I don't think that we can require that if it is personal, not if it's his personal.
If you don't mind me asking, is it is it a permanent structure like a yurt? Is it is it set upon on a wood platform or foundation?
No foundation.
Just sitting on the ground.
It's not permanent, you ask me, to answer your question.
Absolutely.
You selling it?
Pretty old.
Yeah.
Well. You're willing to to take take it down off the the website.
Yeah, I mean, that hasn't served.
Yeah. But we still have to do part two and three of seeker.
Right, but I just wanted to make. So can we make this a condition now or no?
You can't do conditions on the local law. This isn't like.
I know, I know, but I mean.
So now you can't do conditions if you wanted to wait and see what happens. You don't have to make a decision tonight. So you may want to wait and see, you know, if if you're more comfortable voting after you see that he's taken that off the site. You can do that, but you can't put a condition on a local law. Like you've got on a planning or zoning.
We're not approving a project, we're approving a zone.
I know, I know. But I just didn't know.
Yeah.
What we could add.
You can't do a conditional zoning.
Okay. I've given you all the part one that was provided from the applicant or the requestor in this case of this only change. Prepare to draft part two. We can go through it if anybody has any differences of opinion, we'll change it as we go. The impact on land proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. I checked yes, because he is talking about farming, there will be impact to the land. I then checked no or small impact for all the categories, though, because I don't believe it rises to the level we can reach for each one. The proposed action may involve construction of land where depth of water table is less than three feet. That answer is no. Proposed action may involve construction slopes of fifteen percent or greater, that's a no. Impact. Proposed action may involve construction of land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. I checked a small impact or no or small in that one. They probably, I'm sure there are sections where there is areas of bedrock, but it's not potential, I don't believe, looking at the the soils map online in the overview. Proximy about construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, that is a no. The construction may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. That is no impact. And the proposed action is or may be located within the coastal erosion hazard area, there is no impact. Impact on G I. I have checked no impact on that one or no impact on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more weapons or other surface water bodies. I checked yes, primarily the proximity to the rock and I believe there's ton on the property. So is the potential, so I checked yes. I checked no or small impact on everything else. Proposed action may create a new water body. That's a no. May result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent or more than ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any water body. That's a no. Proposed actually may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards of. Proposed action may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body, that's no. Proposed action may involve construction, they're adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the head or banks of any water body. That's no or small impact. Proposed may create turbidity in a water body either from a planned erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. Uh, that's a no or small impact. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. It's a no or small impact. Proposed action may construction or one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water, that's a no. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. That's a no or small impact. Proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action, that's a no or small impact. Proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. That is a no or small impact. Uh, proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, that's a no. Then impact on groundwater. I was on the fence about this one in airing on the side of caution, I did check yes.
Remember what, what your action here is creating a new zoning district, it's not what he's going to do on the property.
Okay. Then should we?
Right.
Say no on that one then, on groundwater?
Probably creating no.
Yeah.
Zoning district is no on everything.
Yeah.
You're, you're just changing lines on your zoning map.
Fair enough.
And should he leave things with permits down the road, they'll go through the law seeker.
How does the board feel about that?
Anything that's a yes would then be a no, Mary Lou? Even for.
Cause all of those.
Cause all we're doing is changing this only. The, 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 the use was allowed either way. You were, you were allowed agricultural use, whether you're an R two or.
Not change, I got it.
There's no change. Yeah, I was thinking of.
Right, you, you're thinking.
He was telling us why he wanted to change and that was, yeah.
So back to one impact on land would be a no?
Yeah, so, uh. One would be a no, two would be a no, surface water would change for me, I would know. Impact on groundwater would change, yes, to a no. Impact on flooding would change for me, yes, to a no. Impact on air already wasn't no, impact on plants and animals already wasn't no. Impact on agricultural resources would be a no. Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. Is a no. Number ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources is a no. Number eleven, impact on open space and recreation is a no. Number twelve, impact on critical environmental area is a no.
Mike, quick question. Do they order any Davis spawn? Or it's not Davis now? We said artifacts.
Right, but as Mary Lou said, this is a zoning change, so.
Okay, we're not going to worry about what's. Okay.
Was present, they, they can farm on it now. Okay.
Impact on transportation. I apologize, I missed that one, is a no. Uh, impact on energy is a no. Impact of noise, odor and light is a no. Impact on human health is a no. Consistency with the community plans is a no. Inconsistency with community character is a no.
If they had been. You know, applying at the same time to do certain activities on that land, then we'd look at them together. Both the zoning change and the. If they wanted to apply for events or a farm stand or whatever, then we'd look at them together. And some of those things might be, you know, low impact, but they haven't applied for any of that.
Okay, uh, based on that, let's go to the part three. Uh, we are required to do the part three if we have any moderate to large impacts checked. So, um, this was a type one action because this is zoning district change for greater than twenty-five acres. Um, we have completed part one, two and three. So upon review of the information recorded on the E A F plus this additional support information. And considering both magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, it is the conclusion of the Town of Rochester Town Board. Letter A, this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration. Is issued. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I.
I.
Hi. Kate, I will update this and get it to you tomorrow because we need to publish this in the P N D.
I personally would like to take. I, a little bit more time myself to vote on this. That came up earlier. I don't know how the rest of the board is feeling, but I have not taken the applicant up on the offer to visit the property and I would really like to do that. Before I vote. Does anyone have a?
I have no problem. I think it would be appropriate that we wait and, uh. We can ask Mr. Davis, if the board would like, I will ask Mr. Davis to verify that there are not violations on the property. To confirm. Because it is a legislative act, so we, we can. Verify that there are no code violations on the property before we do a legislative act on the process, so. I can ask Mr. Davis to review that. And we can, uh, consider this. At a later meeting.
And I'll reach out to you to schedule a site visit in the next couple of weeks.
You can do it tomorrow.
Okay, I can't, but.
You might have to walk through a lot of brush, but.
I can handle that.
I think.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on. Uh, yes, it's turning for the town report.
Uh, just want to let you know that I reviewed the short-term rental application. Few very minor changes, they did a good job on that. I got those two listed today. So they'll make those changes and I think that will be ready to, to go. Either depending on her schedule tomorrow or early next week.
Yeah, I spoke to her this afternoon and she was going to make those changes, so I anticipate Monday that.
Monday is a holiday.
Tuesday, thank you.
We have a budget.
We have a budget meeting Monday night, yes. Um, but we will get a, uh, release, uh, on the website and on, in the newspaper, awarding people to this.
Um, also, I've been, Mr. Jones Lee, we've been. Working together as he's taken over the chairmanship of the planning board, just. Getting up to date on procedures and things, um, so we've, and catching up on some of the applications that the former. Chairman had been working on to, to get him up to date on those. And you'll remember from long ago, from last year, when the Z B A made its decision on who's they filed a notice of appeal. Your time is coming up, they get a long time to put in their appeal. I believe their date is the eighteenth and I believe that they're doing it because they've started preparing the record for the court, so. Stay tuned, that's, that's what I'll be doing in November.
Okay. Any else?
That's enough.
Kate, Town Clerk Tax Collector Report.
Okay, for the month of September, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents was collected and turned over to the supervisor. Um, we have a liquor license that's been filed for Starlight Motel. I've received resignations for Anthony Big Neil.
Big Neil.
Big Neil.
Uh, Town Constable and the Tina Poe, second deputy town clerk. Um, I personally want to thank Tina for the past three years working together. She's been a great asset to the town clerk's office and the highway department and we will miss having her. Um, I want to personally congratulate Ashley Sweeney on all her hard work sorting through and cleaning five hundred pounds of plastic. In order to receive the Lions Club bench that is sitting out front. I came here on multiple occasions and she was up to her elbows in plastic.
I really did love the caution tape that I saw in the.
With me, I put it in there, it's plastic.
Do not cross.
Now she's collecting plastic for a second bench, so I wish I lost that. Um, that's all I have on the clerk end of things.
And, and to add to that, the Lions Club tells us as long as we keep collecting five hundred pounds, they'll keep bringing us benches until the program stops, so.
Love that.
That's great.
I love dropping that off.
Yep.
I love having somewhere to put it.
The only thing, it can't be anything that has had, uh, food products in it, like bread bags are okay, but anything that's had. Frozen vegetable bags aren't, but bread bags are. I'm not sure.
Things we've all been ordering from, you know, Amazon and online when we didn't shop.
Yeah.
That stuff's all good.
But all that packaging, that, anything that comes in bubble wrap, any of that, please bring it, we'll take it.
And it's helped us, I think people thought they were being, they didn't realize that, because there was definitely some garbage.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I.
That it? Thank you, Kate. Um. That's just stepped out, but, uh, we'll defer the highway superintendent's report, but. Uh, a quick announcement on the highway. This involves the Town of Gardiner, but, uh, the town supervisor, Paul, had notified me today that the Clover Road Bridge. Will be closed from October eighteenth and indefinitely while they replace it. It only affects about four homes in Gardiner that are on the other side of the bridge from forty-four fifty-five. But it does impact an awful lot of Rochester residents.
Oh, yeah.
Um, wanted to make people aware, the bridge was red flagged by the D O T. It, it must either be, must be closed, they are now repairing it, replacing it. Um, they're hoping to get it done in a couple of months, but, uh, want to make people aware. And, uh, they put this press release out today, there are signs up that have been up a couple of weeks, uh, notifying, but. Is anybody who lives on Clover Road or often uses that cut, it will not be available. Um. Supervisor's report has been filed with the Town Clerk, uh, for this month of September. Our total revenue was one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents from the general fund. Ninety-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents from the highway fund. Expenditures paid with abstract nine from the general fund, one hundred four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Highway fund, one hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Street lighting fund, three hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents, the grant fund, nine hundred twenty dollars. Total expense in September, general fund, one hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Highway fund, two hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and forty dollars and nine cents. Street lighting fund, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents, grant fund, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Correspondence report, there is a significant amount of correspondence in your packet. Uh, for the board members, I'd like to call your attention to a report from the school district. This is a report that is presented to me on a yearly basis, Lisa Pack, the, uh. Assistant Superintendent and I meet and she goes over, it is, uh. Mandated by the Every Student Succeeds Act funded programs and it is a synopsis of those programs in all the schools. Um, she and I usually meet about an hour to go over the report, but I wanted to provide a copy to all of you, be able to see it. A number of comment emails that were received. Uh, I've included the meeting agenda from the Supervisors Association that meets on a monthly basis. Notice from the D E C on a conference that they are having on, uh, climate resilience. A notice from Ulster County Business and this was posted on the town website of the Ulster County Cares Small Business Assistance Program. If anybody has any interest in information, they should contact, uh, the Office of Economic Development. Uh, notice from the Kingston Uptown Business Association, they have been sponsoring a lot of bicycle-related events. They are sponsoring a bicycle raffle at their Snowflake Festival Friday, December third. Uh, they are, locks and bike helmets are being donated. Um, they do a lot of, uh. Bicycle tune-up, uh, events, they do a lot of bicycle safety events, uh. Somehow we got on their mailing list and I get all their emails every month.
Here for like a tree line or anything on the day of the snowflake festival.
No.
It's great. It is so much fun.
Um, received a. Notice from Mr. Dunham. You remember he is filling in since his retirement as our assessor field worker aide. Uh, he has informed me that, uh. November. Uh, twenty-fourth, the day before Thanksgiving, will be his last day of work in that position. We are trying to determine if, if the assessor aide will be back from her, uh, leave. By that period of time and if, if not, um, Jeremy Baraka, our new assessor and I spoke and. Uh, he would like us to consider a part-time aide. Temporary aide. So until such time as, as she can return, so, um. We will have to have that discussion. Eventually, uh, because Mike's, Mike is basically filling in that position, he's also training Jeremy at the same time, but it's, uh. He's decided he finally will retire. He's the only person I know who retired on a Friday and then Monday moved to a different seat, came right back to work. Um, notice from the Board of Elections that, uh, polling site setups. This location here will be, uh, the polling site that will replace the Algarve Real Firehouse. It will no longer be the Rochester Two Firehouse. After the last.
District four.
Yeah, yes, after the last election, we spoke at length with the Board of Elections. And, uh, they have agreed to use this site here, so the community center will be District Four. Notice from Central Hudson, uh, incentives for new equipment, uh. Something to look to or into, but I'm not sure exactly, uh. I think we've already had the energy assessments that they're talking about, so I'm not sure. Um, notice from the Ulster County Electrical Licensing Board. That the law has been adopted and will be in effect on one-one twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Uh, and I have shared that with the code enforcement officer. Um, we have an invite from the Mid Hudson Regional Sustainability Coalition. Energy Working Group, uh. They are putting together a, a program for solar mapping. To determine good areas for the development of solar. Um, it is a total of five meetings. They've asked that we put together a team if we are interested, I expressed. Some interest in it initially, uh, I don't know. Aaron, Chris, um. If either of you have any interest, the E C C members, I've reached out to Madeline to see if anybody from that, that group. They asked for a team of two to four people, that way if, if somebody is unable to be at one of the sessions, there will still be. Uh, people representing the town. I'm not quite sure what exactly the project is or does. Um, but they made, Manojo Green was the one who made me. but they made, Manojo Green was the one who made me aware of this, and she has sort of put the project together. Public notice from the Ulster County Transportation Council for amendments to the Federal Fiscal Year Transportation Program for Ulster County for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four. I shared this with us because one of the pieces is within the town of Gardner. It is the intersection at Brunswick Road and forty-four fifty-five, which has been rated as the most dangerous intersection in all of Ulster County. Because of that, the state is, put it on their schedule to do some traffic improvements there for safety. They will not do a four-way stop sign, no, they won't do a four-way stop sign on, on state roads, they say, although they did it on, oh, no, two-nine, yeah, two-ninety-nine is a state road. They did do it on two-ninety-nine, but I asked if that was an option, and I was told no, but they are, and they will be installing, I believe, a traffic light there and doing other safety improvements for visibility.
By Lombardi's Restaurant.
Yes, yes, there have been a number of fatalities there and a significant number of accidents with both vehicle and personal injury, and it has been rated as the most dangerous intersection in Ulster County. So if anybody who travels that way regularly wishes to make any comments, there is a period of time where the public, it's a fifteen-day public comment period. And where people can speak on that. So they must be emailed, or the comment period ends Wednesday, October twentieth at five P M. So, and I did have this put up on the website as well. Very interesting news from the Department of Public Service. They are conducting a broadband survey. We will get the information out, there's a barcode here that you can scan to take the survey. I found that it doesn't really work very well with my Android phone, so you can go online though and take the survey. And if you go online with your laptop, of course, the irony is you're doing a broadband survey.
Yeah.
With broadband, but if you go online, it will also gauge your speed while you were on during the survey and.
Everybody else in the house has to be, only one person can be online.
So just received this, this week, we will get this information up on the website, I want to publicize this as much as possible. The governor has declared that New York State is fifty, excuse me, ninety-eight percent covered for broadband. Those of us in Ulster County severely disagree with that. So the county planning director is really advocating that the survey be filled out as, by as many people as is possible to sort of prove that, that they are incorrect in that. And I took the survey, it's, it's fairly brief, it takes you about ten minutes to do, it's not really so long. And if you Google, Google the Information Department Broadband Survey, yeah.
I have two with the S.
Also received from the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency, their budget and their price, their fee schedule for next year. It remains as it is this year. And they have publicized that they are looking within Ulster County for a location for a, a solid waste facility. That's about all we know at this point, they have identified some locations, they are not divulging where those are at this point, so. It was in the Freeman, you can read about it, I don't know any more information other than what I read in the Freeman. So that is our communication. COVID Monthly Report, we have eleven cases as of yesterday in the town of Rochester, two hundred and seventy-seven remain in the county, the numbers are indeed dropping again. The Ulster County Budget was presented last Thursday in new calls by the county executive. Very exciting piece of it for the town of Rochester, and we will be speaking more about that later with Mr. Andenberg from OSI. Twenty-twenty-two Town Budget, the tentative budget was filed with the Town Clerk on September twenty-ninth. The board will be holding budget workshop meetings on the eleventh, the twentieth, and the twenty-eighth to review, to create the preliminary budget. We have a resolution on the agenda tonight to hold the public hearing on the budget at our November regular meeting, and somewhere in there, maybe we need to squeeze in a fourth, because normally we do four budget meetings, but we'll have to get them in three, so we'll give it our best shot. Heritage Day, I just want to take a second, and I think I would like to applaud Kate Gunberg. Her leadership on creating Heritage Day, a lot of people were involved, and I'm not going to embarrass myself and try to name everybody. But it was Kate's idea, Kate took what was a little behind the museum festival and turned it into a community day, and every bit of credit for the initial idea and the planning goes to her, and thank you, Kate, for all you did, for your team. I was honored to be a part of it in my little small way, and thank you for that. So I'm going to let Kate name the people involved, because I, I would know I will forget somebody, sorry.
I just want to say, there really, I, I don't even have the words to say how thrilled I was with how the day turned out. We had a few hiccups along the way, things we'll learn about next year, but all in all, it was amazing, and it was everything that we wanted it to be, really bring the community together, learn different organizations we have, and how people can get involved, and it was a great family day. The weather was beautiful, and the crowd came, even though I had nightmares for weeks leading up to it. But I would like to thank all the residents on Main Street and Schoolhouse Road, Scenic Road, Toathath and Granite that were affected by living in the vicinity of the festival, you know. Though I might think it's a great idea to have a festival on my street, other people may not, and I just want to let them know that as a neighbor, we really appreciate that. Some of our financial donors that helped with the day, I just want to mention, Acord Market, Revenue Markets, Hummanson Funeral Home, A and M Hardware, Nacho Taco Food Truck, James Tire Service, Rochester Resident Association, Margaret Smith, Sean and Rita Harkins, Rock Mountain Farm, Solid Waste Disposal Service, Saunders Kill Farm, Rob Berman and Chase Brock. Not only did they give a financial donation, but they also opened up the Acord Depot for tours that day. First student for donating a shuttle and a driver, and the town of Rochester for sponsoring the fireworks. There were a lot of volunteers that day, and a lot of people that, you know, said, how can we help you? But there are certain ones that really stand out for me during the event, and I just want to mention them. You know, the Accord and Honson First Aid Squad, and members of the Rochester Two Fire Company. Members of the Accord Fire Company, especially Pat Davis, Will Farrell, and Peter Nelson. Kelly Karen, Donna Adele, Chrissy Farrar, Tim Harley, Shay Davis, Rob Kilker, Lisa and Donnie Ryder, Jared Lumberg, Matt Denon, Jeff Frye, Tom Karate, Leonard Crum, Anna Henneberry, Jessica Knapp, Pam Stocking, Renee Sicardi, Alyssa Farrell, who organized our car show, Amy Barley, and Steve Twiliger, who assisted her, our Town Constables, Rich Miller, Mark Kefkar, Mark Smith, and DJ Copin. Our Historic Preservation Commission, Environmental Conservation Commission, the presenters, and Chris Hewitt at the Wood Fired Pizza Oven. The Ulster County Sheriff Dive Team, Mary Lee, Gary Miller, with the Palantown School, and Deborah Martin, who put together the quilt show. And our friends of historic Rochester members who saw this vision from the beginning to the end. Bethany Denon, Ashley Sweeney, Betsy Tully, and Alice Cross. I know there's probably so many other to thank, but those are definitely people that stood out that day, and were actually given assignments, and when they were getting low on food, took another trip to Kingston to get food, and we went through five hundred and fifty flyers per vehicle. So I would like to think there was well over a thousand people in attendance for the day, and that to me was just amazing, so. And just build next year and make it even better, so thank you all, and thank all that came out and supported the town, and it was a great day.
Thank you, Kate. The New York Rising Algarveville Firehouse update. You probably, anybody who lives or has driven by, has seen that the footings were poured last week. They are starting to put in the first set, the, the first six to eight feet of wall, and that will then be poured, and then they'll keep building up from that. I was there with a construction meeting yesterday, and we are on progress still to be two hundred and seventy-five days from contract to have, have it finished still. Town Park Playground, we are scheduled for an install the twenty-fifth, or excuse me, the twenty-sixth of October. It will be throughout that week, we will be removing the existing playground equipment for the week of the eighteenth. So there will be about a two-week block of time where unfortunately the playground will not be able to be utilized, at least that, that main structure, the swings and things will still be accessible, but it's exciting, this is the new playground equipment that we ordered, that we budgeted for last year, to replace at least twenty-five-year-old, if not older, that was donated by the Curhox and Acord Chamber of Commerce. At least twenty-five, and I think maybe thirty years ago, so. Yeah, it was the mid-nineties. Ninety-four, okay. I asked Brittany, he said, nah, he wasn't sure, he said more than twenty-five, ninety-four, maybe. J-CAP Grant Update, Judge LaFlamme and I have worked on a grant application that has been submitted for an upgrade to the bathrooms at the courthouse to make them ADA compliant. That grant application was, the board approved to apply for up to thirty thousand, we have submitted that application, and we will find out in the spring if we receive that grant. The Skate Time Purchase Referendum Vote, the vote is December seventh, from twelve to nine P M, to be held in this space. It will be a ballot conducted by the Board of Elections, utilizing their voting machines. We will be holding a walkthrough of Skate Time for the public to be able to view the space to hear the ideas. And on October twelfth, next Tuesday, from six-thirty till eight-thirty P M. And that's, at that point, we can try to answer whatever questions we know. The referendum is simply to purchase the building, the town board did not want to spend a lot of funds on moving forward with design until we knew if the public wanted to purchase the building or not. That's why we moved into referendum, so the public can say whether they want us to purchase this building or not. If the public votes no, we, we owe nothing to the contract, and the contract is void. So December seventh is the opportunity for the public to weigh in with their vote.
How many machines are they giving us, Mike?
I, I don't know.
I'd just say, I'd really recommend that everybody kind of spread the word about the, you know, the walkthrough on the twelfth, I think. You know, being in the building, kind of getting the, the vision of what it could potentially be, but more importantly, getting the feedback from the, from the community is the absolute most important thing we can do, so I'm asking everybody on the board, everybody in the public, and everybody on the, watching this at home to, to spread the word. We really want a nice turnout, and the more questions, the more comments, the better.
Okay. It's not public comment right now, but we will be up to public comment very soon. Okay. Department and liaison reports, Bee, I'll start with you.
Leanne Warren has been out for surgery, the other clerk has done well, although she's still in her learning curve, it's the first time she's been alone that Leanne hasn't been there with her, we expect Leanne back next week, and she did well with her surgery, and the court has stayed very operational, so.
Yep, she called today and asked a couple of quick questions, but she is doing very well.
The Environmental Commission, as Kate mentioned, was behind the community center giving out information last weekend, and had a presentation by the Butterfly Woman. And it'll be a bigger update next month.
Constabulary, court's mostly open, the constabulary answered thirty-one calls for service and other duties in September. These include twenty-three neighbor-to-neighbors and quality-of-life complaints, five resident traffic complaints, again on Whitfield, Lower Whitfield, Mediconics, and Clay Hill Roads, and Sampsonville Road. Three environmental complaints on Wood Road, Kaiser Road, and Old Kicks Highway, five new building department violations, zero court cases are open. Thirteen court proceedings remain open, and three court cases and proceedings were closed. Interesting occurrences, it's been another busy month, during the month, special events in town caused a significant increase in traffic, trespassing, and parking condition complaints from residents, garbage complaints along these same roads and other residents' properties have risen sharply and again. In addition, the area around the special events, trespassers into residents' properties in many areas on the town are still ongoing issues. Neighbor-to-neighbor complaints have increased this month with notable increase with noise complaints due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and a rise in its variants. We continue to have limited contact with complainants with proportional increase in direct phone calls from Rich Miller.
And Karen.
I don't really have an update, I just want two reminders, you might have, were going to say this, Mike, the planning board meeting is next Thursday.
Yes.
Because Monday is a holiday, and then the following Thursdays are regularly scheduled to be.
Okay. The Recreation Department, Thursday, the twenty-eighth, is sponsoring a pumpkin carving from six to eight, I believe, at the Pavilion, sign up. They're, they're doing a limited number of people because they want to manage the, the group. They sign up with the Recreation Department, there also will be a drive-through trick-or-treat event like we did last year on the twenty-ninth, that Friday evening. You have the time for that? So, okay, apologies, I don't remember the time for that, but check, it'll, it'll be late afternoon into the early evening like last, like last year, but was very successful. Our assessors update. Our new assessor, he's doing a review of all recent sales and transfers, he's reviewing and tracking building permits, certificate, certificate of compliance, and certificate of occupancies. He's updating property records based on recent sales data, his completed building permits, lot line revisions and subdivisions. He's updating property values based on completed building permits and current property data. During October, he's going to start to prepare exemption renewal applications. He would be sending out applications for senior citizens, disabled persons with limited income, agricultural exemptions, holy and some properties, grandparents, clergy and forest exemptions, and all exemptions are due back to the office by March first, twenty-twenty-two. So if you can spread the word, if anybody has, is required to file applications.
Is from five to seven.
Thank you, five P M to seven P M. I want to take one second to thank Amelia Trempe Garden, Garden Makers, and her husband Sergeant David Wilhelm, and Saunderskill Farm for their donation. They donated to us some of the plants that they had left over, or a number of the plants that they had left over on their stand from the summer. Amelia and her husband, she said she did the planting and he did the labor, was her description. Planted perennial garden for us at our Veterans Park in the center area. It's. Very impressive, and I'm sure will, moving forward in the future, will bloom very nicely every year, so. She approached me with this idea. We've been. Excuse me, working on an idea of what to do in the center for quite some time. She and her husband took care of this for us essentially in a weekend, so thank you to them for their help. And that's all I have, so. I'd like, this time, any town board members have any other items to bring up?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as a two-time survivor, I do this every year. Ladies and gentlemen. Please be aware that men, you too, can get breast cancer. Ladies are more aware of it, but it's coming into being more and more, and it's being talked about more and more. So please, if you think you have a problem, go get it checked, so you don't wind up in trouble. That's my announcement. I do it every October. And I'm still here.
I have a couple things. I wanted to take a moment to publicly thank. Marilyn Lindstrom for her years of service as our Planning Board Chair. As she recently stepped out of that role, but I didn't want the effort and time that she put into that to go unnoticed. And then I also, a couple of things have come up that. The zoning review committee has addressed, like, some things publicly. People have been talking about. Special events, commercial events, things like that, and I just want to appeal to the board. That we try to prioritize some of the recommendations this year. To get started on those, I know next month is budget, so we don't have a lot of time. But I would be happy to maybe prepare. Some pairings for us to review, starting in November. The committee spent a lot of time, and I think it would be nice to start addressing that, because I'm hearing a lot from our community on those issues. And this board, I know we only have a few months left together, but. We can be in that committee, so I think it'd be nice for us to get started on some of those items.
Absolutely. My, my hope and mental plan was that we would. Address that as soon as we finish budget, because October is going to be budget.
Yeah.
But.
But I'm happy to help coordinate and organize. Because I am very familiar with the packet, so.
Understood.
I will help. Thank you.
Okay.
I feel like the presentation that you all did was amazing, and you made it very clear what some next steps are, so thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, public comment. We'll start with you, Mr. Eversano. Thank you for your understanding.
Don't think I was just, that when you're having walkthrough at the skate time, is there designated time for question and answer, just as we walk through chit-chatting one another?
The board hadn't come to a decision of how to handle that exactly. It was. The reason we did it two-hour time, so it could be a little flexible. People come sort of on their timeframe walkthrough. I'm hoping that we can do sort of a little bit of a presentation. At least once and maybe twice during that timeframe, so people can see it maybe in the beginning, and they don't have to wait around, and. We've done some tax-based calculations. It's very difficult to do, because we don't know what the percentage of interest will be when we, when we assume this loan. We don't know what. The budgets will be for future. We don't know what the assessed value of the town will be for future, so. This will be paid over a thirty-year period of time. We have prepared a thirty-year chart with various possibilities, but at this point. Those, there's no way to pin it down, because nobody can predict what the value of the town will be fifteen or eighteen years from now. We can guess based on a ten-year cycle, but we can't really predict. Definitively, it will be, the one thing I can say is each year it will decrease. The first year will be the most, because you'll pay the most interest, and it will decrease proportionally from there.
I understand, I understand that kind of projection, but this. Question that needs to be answered on a day-by-day basis in front of the establishment.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough, and we will, we will try to address those.
Projection is like one percent, you know, thirty years, okay? I feel one hundred percent thirty days.
Understood.
There's quite a big void there as to what we anticipate and the reality of where we are as of today. And what to expect tomorrow in twenty twenty-two. And as we go forth. Empowers that are right now, at where they are, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. That are going to affect us as a community, that when the bottom line comes, when there's no money. The town of Rochester's taxpayers is going to be the place to grab it from. That's my concern.
Fair enough, understood. Okay, does anyone else wish to speak tonight?
I saw that there's a broken record regarding the fire inspection fee. And I know you have more pressing issues to deal with, but I just wanted to stress that our problem is a pretty simple one. It's not about talking to the fire inspector, but about respecting the town board decisions. In our case, the fire inspector wrongfully divided the size of our building by fifteen. Instead of considering what the town board clearly indicates in the minute of the organizational meeting. That establishment meant for public assembly for less than fifty persons, as ours. Should have the fire inspection every two years. It's very simple. The local, and also, the fire inspector is not aware of the residential, commercial status of our building. So following the September meeting, town board meeting, I remailed the supervisor Brian Baden, the copy of the notice. Indicating it's based on the local law of two thousand and seven, which obviously was not updated. And so we go to the decision from January two thousand and twenty-one. So a copy of that notice received from the CEO and the fire inspector. And a copy of the planning board decision from December twenty ten. Regarding our approval for a special use permit for a mixed use at the existing antique store. So that's regarding our residential commercial status for over ten years. I don't know if the notice and the decision and have been, and our analysis point, I have been shared to town board members. And what other documents we should provide to have this issue finally solved.
Right, well, I have, I have spoken with the code enforcement officer, because this is not a. Town board issue, it's a code enforcement issue, but I will, I will speak with them again and find out what the status of it is. I have spoken with them several times.
So many times, and when finally, I told Jerry Davis, he said it's a town board decision, and I should write to the town.
I'm not sure why, because we only establish the, the fee, we don't decide. So I'll speak with him again and try to resolve.
As I said, you know, it's not dividing. They shouldn't expect, put us in that category. The fire inspector stressed to, said all the time to me, you are, you cannot be. For, in the category of for less than fifty people in a. Building which is more than fifty percent, sixty percent residential, it's our home. He's, he was telling me that I can have one hundred and sixty people. Let's be serious. He should not divide, plus that recently we were, it's about empty floor space, so it's not. Not even fifty, not even, I mean, it's absurd what they did. When I spoke to Mr. Davis, he, he said he's aware we are residential and commercial, and he said. You have a commercial and for that, of course, but let us be the way we have been. For those who don't know, residential buildings do not have fire inspections and do not pay anything. We paid for years. We are more than fifty percent residential. And also. Respected, it's meant to be for less than fifty, is more than obvious that. Our little portion of the antique store, not only, not to mention that it was not open for two years. And this is brutal, it's ridiculous.
I will, I will speak to him again and find out where, what the status of it is.
My second point, I wanted to finish on a positive. The pleasure of conveying my sincereest congratulations. For the way Heritage Day was planned and organized. I mean, a huge bravo to Kate, Ashley, also our recreation department, Ashley Swinney, but Bethany, then. For their energy dedication, organization and skill, determination, the hard work to make this fantastic Heritage Day happen. The town was, as you probably realize in a way, unrecognizable, amazing. And as a member of the, I want to add, as a member of the Recreation Commission, I want to add special thanks. And congratulations to Deborah Martin. For her idea and organization of the amazing quilt show at the community center. A wonderful accomplishment. We didn't have such an idea, a new idea, activity in a long, long time. So bravo to all those involved. It was absolutely amazing.
And thank you, as always, for being our resident photographer.
I felt like I needed more time to cover it. Loading the photos, I had the next rabattage, I'm using a traditional camera, but it was absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
And very emotional, talking about it. Vigil for us.
Yes.
Extreme emotion, stupid. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Yes.
About skate time and to reiterate what Diane said. I find it seems to me that you're hosting a tour with the seller, which I find not very appropriate. The town should have a meeting. With a public hearing where. It's not so much a presentation, but we get to ask questions. Okay, about, and then if the information part would be, what are the costs? That we don't know all the costs. But we know there have been previous utility bills. We know what the square footage is. We could get a quote from the insurance guy, because we're going, we're still going to possess all these buildings. We can't get rid of them. We have to keep this, we have to keep the highway department. And we can't sell the courthouse. So we have all these projects going on, and we're looking at this one wonderful thing, right, without looking at the big picture. So. It, the presentation should include, what can we get rid of, what can we keep? Because it's being presented as. I don't need to see it toward the building I've been in it. So, just.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Have you thought of a date for me to open up the courthouse for people? You never read my letter.
I'd love to see that. Thank you.
I offered to do open house at the courthouse.
Understood.
And I'm also willing to do one at the town hall and one here, so people can come in, see the building, because I'm sure there's people that have, have never been in here. People have never, some people have never been in our town hall. We could have it open, though. I've offered to do that on my time, no poison the town.
Is there anyone else who wish, who should speak? Jeff, do you want to give a highway update, if you have any?
Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned.
I did mention the gardener.
Okay, yeah, basically, you probably mentioned it. We'll be taking care of any emergencies that happen on. Our end of the town of Gardner. If Mother Nature doesn't cooperate before they. Get the bridge done, we will, of course, plow all the way to the bridge and then be reimbursed by the town of Gardner for. Any sand salt we use. The hope is that they'll have it done before winter, but. In this time of year, that's, you know, the countdown is on. But, and then, of course, they're going to still maintain the road, their side, our side of the road, I should say. But we will take care of any emergencies, trees, or anything like that. We will take care of, so they don't have to circle all the way back around. Because we have a shared services agreement with Gardner. We don't get an opportunity to really do a lot of sharing together with them, so. Brian and I, the town of Gardner, Highway Superintendent Brian and I saw an opportunity here for me to help him out with this, so. I offered to do so, so shouldn't, I mean, it's going to obviously affect traffic, hopefully no more than a month, hopefully, or. Month and a half, but just so people are aware that anybody that goes through there to go to forty-four fifty-five, that, that will not happen.
Jeff, has the school been notified?
So they're, they, I'm going to notify the school myself. Brian has also offered to notify the school. I will notify the school. I will notify first student. Just that we're both doing it, so that they will definitely know.
And emergency services.
Emergency services, we will let emergency services, I don't know if you guys go all the way through. Correct. Yeah, I know, it was weird, and I, and Brian said he was in contact all, and I'll double-check, he's kept, really doing.
County emergency services has been notified, that I know.
So.
Anytime there's a road closure like that.
So we're trying to stay and make sure everybody knows, and, you know, do the best we can.
Will there be signs on our end? There already is, okay, thank you.
I noticed them a week and a half ago, and I was going to call Brian, and then he called me today and says, I'm sure you've seen the signs, and I said, I have. And he says, well, let's start talk over eighteenth.
The supervisor called me today and sent me that, that notice.
They're going to replace, they have to.
It was red flagged, it's a forward place. Okay. I'd like to introduce Bob Anderberg, a local resident, who is with Open Space Institute. And he has some information to present to us about the O N W rail trail.
Can everybody see these maps? My name is Bob Anderberg. I'm the Senior Vice President and General Counsel of the Open Space Institute. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Bob Anderberg, I'm the Senior Vice President and General Counsel of the Open Space Institute. Also a forty-five-year resident of the town of Rochester. And just as a personal aside, thank you for Heritage Day. Thank you to Kate and everybody who worked on it. My grandkids were dazzled by the fireworks, and it'll be many years before they forget it, so thank you. Anyway, Open Space Institute is a regional conservation organization, which, among other things, you know, buys and preserves land. Over the last twenty years, O S I has been working on six interconnected rail trails. In the western Hudson River Valley, and they are the Catskill Mountain Rail Trail, the O N W Rail Trail, which you know, because it runs through your town. The Walco Valley Rail Trail, which runs from Kingston all the way down, will run to Walden. The Orange Heritage Trail in Orange County, O S I is purchasing the Erie branch of the Erie Railroad. Which runs from Chester all the way to Storm King, and ultimately to Hudson River. We have been investing significant amounts of money in this trail network for years, purchasing segments here and there. Recently, we've been improving the beds of these rail trails, and. Last year, we improved the Walker Valley Rail Trail from Kingston all the way down to New Paltz. We, some years ago, renovated the Rosendale Trestle. And also built a trail outside New Paltz called the River to Ridge Trail. I don't, don't know if you're familiar with it. But the, the River to Ridge Trail and the interconnected Walker Valley Rail Trail. Received five hundred fifteen thousand visitors last year, so it's a huge economic driver. It's huge in terms of public health benefits, and they're open and available to all without charge. Next map, Michael. Well, actually, that's. We've been focusing on the O N W for years. We have asked the New York State Office of Parks to give us a grant. In order to study this trail all the way from the Hudson River, Kingston, all the way down to the. In order to study this trail all the way from the Hudson River, Kingston, all the way down to the Delaware River. At Port Jervis, and of course, it runs through three counties, Ulster, Sullivan and Orange and numerous towns. And if we are successful in getting that grant, and I hope we do, we will start studying how to make this into. A unified rail trail for the entire fifty seven mile length, about. Forty nine miles are already in public ownership and in public use to some degree. If we get that grant, we will study the two point one mile gap. In the middle of that court, which separates the northern end from the southern, okay, now we're ready for that.
Landscape.
There you go. The Ryan administration in its proposed budget. The Ryan administration in its proposed budget submitted to the legislature has proposed allocating. Proposed allocating one point nine million dollars to Open Space Institute to undertake three projects. And one is in Gardner, one is in Ellenville, and the third project runs from. Well, runs from Town Hall and Act Ward all the way down to, to Main Street in, in Kirghanson. The amount allocated is five hundred thousand dollars and that would allow us to improve drainage. Fix one culvert, which I'm sure you're aware of, which is pretty bad shape, it's big, it's seventy tons of concrete.
Yeah.
It's gonna be expensive. Reshell the surface, new railings, signage, the whole bit. If anybody wants to see what it looks like, just go over to Rosendale Rail Trail. Which we, we just completed and, and we're actually pushing it down to the garden now. I think the public likes it, it's been well received. I'm here because we need the written permission of the town in order to do this work, it's your rail trail, not ours. But we would love to essentially form a partnership with the town. And using monies provided to us by the county, complete the rail trail from Town Hall. Down at Kirghanson and then beginning work on the two point one mile gap between Main Street and Lucas Turnpike. We would also like to explore. Improving the rail bed from Lucas Turnpike over Cazerek Road all the way up to the town of Marble Town Line. This is not a quick and easy project, it's gonna take several years to get, this will happen, could happen by next spring. We hope, we're gonna bid it out, which we're required to do by law, but we're gonna make this, we're gonna contact local bidders. Right here in the Rondell Valley with hopes that they submit the successful bid. So I think it's good for local business too. So are there any questions?
I see the trail ending at the Worsing line, is that because of the town boundary?
Well, that is a gap there too. That is a mapping error. Okay, actually, it, it goes all the way down to the fire department in Kirghanson.
I think, I think it's paved, it's pretty much paved to the, from fire department to the town line, so that's.
Part, partway, I think not all the way. But we have spoken to the town of Worsing. Because a, a big piece of the project is in Ellenville pushing north. Across the prison lands up past Fortmore Road to forty four fifty five. And I think that they're, they're happy with our proposal. So this is our proposal to the town of Rochester and. If this seems like something you want to do and, and we very much want to partner with the town. We will come back to seeking written permission to undertake phase one. I think right of way clearance and drainage improvement would, well, we'd have to bid it out in November, kind of do that. Right away clearance and drainage improvements could begin this fall. I think repairs of that horrifying culvert would take place and bring, and this project could be finished. By mid or end of next summer.
I have a couple of questions, Bob, do you want me to give them to you one at a time?
It's whatever you want.
Okay, so.
Set this down so I can see.
I'll hold it up to you.
One is just to clarify that the, we, the grant that you applied for. That we passed a resolution in support of a couple of months ago.
Oh, and thank you very much.
Is separate from this.
Totally separate.
So that was a feasibility study to connect that the entire. Green trail as one contiguous trail.
Yes, that was a feasibility study from Kingston to Port Jervis.
And you haven't heard back about that yet, you said.
No, but the, the office of parks recently ranked all of the applications and ours ranked very high, so we're, we're hopeful we'll get it. And that would allow us to study the entire car.
Great, so then the second question I had is you said that. You, that OSI sometimes does purchase. Bits of trail, so that's part of what you guys do, it sounds to me in your presentation that that is not something. That you are considering doing with this current. What, what you're presenting to us, that this.
Oh no, because it's, it's already ten known.
Right, so.
And I think the town's done an absolutely fine job.
So all you're doing with this is improving our current. Trail for phase one, you did say phase two, you'll start looking at the gap.
Phase two will be the gap, the one point seven miles of trail running from Lucas to the Marble Town Line. Yeah, that, that would be phase two.
And so what does that entail?
Well, we, we would ask our engineers to carefully study that gap. And quite frankly, to be honest, I don't know the solution right now. And there may be a short term solution and a long term solution. We had a similar problem on Route thirty two and Green Hill Avenue in Kingston. The short term solution is to just re-engineer the street. To accommodate bikers, which actually costs a lot of money, it's about a million dollars a mile.
Right.
Would the town pay for that? No, I don't think so. The DOT would cover that cost. But our engineers would, would look at Lucas two oh nine in Main Street and see from an engineering point of view, what can be done. There may be a longer term solution, but that would require the cooperation of a number of landowners.
Right.
Those discussions have not started yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How much property is included around the institution and how do you have to approach the state to get? To allow people to cross through there?
Well, the Department of Corrections and Community Services granted a perpetual easement. To the town of Worsing. It's one point five miles long and it actually deviates from the old rail bed at one point to get it away from the prison.
That's right.
And the highway superintendent Worsing has been building that out for the last two years. And it's supposed to be ready to go. Our, our project would wrap around that, and that's, we would start at the Burm Road Park in Ellenville.
Right.
Run along the canal bed, across the playing fields owned by the Department of Education, pass the sewage treatment plant.
Right.
And then head straight north over the prison lands and we, we hope with the six hundred thousand that's allocated to that. To get as far as at least a Fordham Road, if not Fordham.
So are you saying a partnership, what, what's our part of the partnership?
Absolutely nothing right now, you know, we, we want to start this work, we want to keep you apprised, this is done at no cost to the town. And I think we want to see how the public uses and enjoys this new trail, my, my. I mean, given the numbers of people using other segments of this two hundred mile long network, I think it's gonna be extremely popular. I must say, I've ridden the Act Ward Rail Trail for eighteen years now, my constant riding partners are right here in the room. It, it is one of the most beautiful segments of the O N W rail trail or any rail trail in here, it has the D N H Canal. The remnants of it, it has the Rondell Creek, it has the boat launch, it is a spectacular stretch of rail trail. And I think when improved will be very comfortable. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, so the agreement would basically be an agreement for the town to allow you. To go in and do these things.
To make the improvements.
Yes, and then we're gonna come back to with our thoughts on how to bridge the gap, we may have solutions, but we may not have solutions, who knows?
The, the Trail Commission has been. Discussing that and there are some options that we, we've actually put on paper that would only. Entail three landowners and the county. Rather than the nine or ten that if we followed the, the mapped bed of the, the original rail line. And mo, most, if not all of that is now in private ownership, so the other way. We're looking at thinking around the idea of, of following the, the. Corridor of the Rondell, making it a longer trail, but sort of. Along the edge of the creek and we have figured out a way that it only will cross three landowners' properties, so. It's an idea, so I'd, I'd be really willing to, and interested in talking more with, with you and your engineers when we get to that stage. The other part of Williams, there is a short section from Kaiserai to the trail. That is owned by Williams, that we don't have a right of way over anymore. There was a private not for profit that was holding that right of way, they. No longer exist because they ended up with only one member left. And so that easement no longer exists, so we, we desperately need to get some sort of formalized agreement for that easement. And then there's a lot of drainage issues in that Flynn. O'Connor, our, our trail, head of our trail committee has done an amazing job in there with his. Excavator and with a rented excavator and put a new culvert in there and put in, what about four? Williams Lumber donated a large amount of material that they had.
Hundreds of yards.
Hundreds of yards, yeah, Flynn put in on that trail to build it up.
To raise the, raise the wet areas. And they've been, Williams were really good about it, you know, donating material and, and not having any issue, I left my excavator for like a month. And just would come in at night and work, which was nice, and they, they really, they've been very supportive. It'd be great to get that in, get that in writing while they're on board and supportive.
So that might be like a, a sooner rather than later thing to try, what would you say, it's about, it's about a hundred, hundred and fifty feet maybe?
The, that, probably it's longer, but it's, it's just the length of their.
It's the length of their parking lot, basically, yeah, we would be happy to help there.
Yeah, they would.
And I think they'd be open to it, I, I, they've been very amenable to it in the past, it just extinguished because the, the group that was holding it. No longer exists, so.
If I could make a comment, the problem is that Central Hudson owns the right of way there too. So it's a three, three-legged dog if you. Purchased the burial right of way from the rumble yard. And Central Hudson, I think a lot of the post fence came there the last time I talked to them. You know, you deal with that, so.
Yeah, they also went in there and totally clear cut the area.
So if, if any of you have any questions about this, you know, I live in town, feel free to pick up the phone, call me, I'm happy to, to answer any questions you might have.
I have a quick question about the big culvert that you mentioned.
Yeah.
My family and I spend a lot of time on that section of rail trail and one of our favorite spots is the bridge with the D N H Canal ruined on the other side.
Yeah.
Will that be disturbed or?
No, that will not be disturbed, the culvert is closer to the Act Ward Town Hall. And you don't even see it when you're riding over the rail trail, but if you go down there, there's a, you know, a seventy ton wing wall.
Yes.
Has shifted over the years and our engineers say if you don't pay attention to it now, you'll have to pay attention to it later.
And did you have one more question?
I had, well, it, the partner shot. Mary Lou got my wheels turning. Is it collaborative along the process, so like would the town board be involved along the way? You'd be showing us what you were going to do before you did it?
We're happy to do it.
Or, I don't, I was just asking what the nature of.
You know what I mean, as a partnership, it really means we work together.
Yeah.
We, in this region, you know, we're working with three counties and probably forty towns. And, you know, we try to have, you know, good relationships with the towns. And then a lot of villagers are in there too. But we would want to work with you and make sure you're happy with this subject.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Along those lines, a quick announcement here, October sixteenth. Our Historic Preservation Commission is sponsoring Canal Day from ten thirty till three P M. There'll be a parade, history lectures, music, an interpretive walk. It's gonna start with an accordion parade from the museum to the town hall pavilion. And that will be at ten thirty, all instrumentalists are invited to join the parade and a dozen children, so that's what. Woodstock Chimes has donated a dozen children's accordions for us to have.
So great.
For that day, so. Then Bill Merchant, the D N H Canal historian, will lead a, lead a talk at eleven fifteen in the pavilion. And then they'll be followed by Sullivan County historians John and Deborah Conway speaking about. The children who led the mules on the canal towpath, there will be. On site, so people can see how they work together. There will be folk singers, Rich Bella and Sarah Underhill will sing songs from the canal era twelve fifteen. Then there'll be an interpretive walk along the canal route starting at one at Town Hall. And they intend for those who want to walk the full distance all the way to Ellenville to do that, I believe. So if anybody is interested in that, you can carpool and leave one car down at Ellenville, so you can get back unless.
Cause it said, they said something about.
Okay, I wasn't, thank you for that, I wasn't aware of that, I will find out from them, so. So this has been in the works for a while, but they, and I'm glad to hear they found a team of mules because. There were a couple, I was trying to help them find a team and we gave them some leads. Hudson Valley, yeah, was it through the draft horse association? Yeah, that's who I, I sent them that direction. I knew there was a team of mules up in Saward East that a guy, a logger was using. And, but, thank you, Kate. Okay, thank you, Bob, Flynn, thank you. Steve Rice, I believe, left, but Steve is. He was the Trail Commission for a very, very long time and. Has passed the torch to Flynn and. I can't thank Flynn enough for all the work he does every, every year on the trail, very hands on head of the commission. Okay, under resolutions. And as for, except the minutes of the August twenty sixth audit workshop meeting, September second, regular meeting. September twenty second, special meeting and the September twenty ninth workshop meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion, corrections?
Nice job, Kate.
Yep. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Next, I do have to make an amendment to this, the town of Rochester Town Board accepts donations of seventy three ninety six from Saint Paul's Textile. And it's a hundred dollars from Sean and Rita Harkins slash cable tracks, track system, that's their business. I misunderstood because I got two letters, I thought they gave two one hundred dollar donations, they gave one one hundred dollar donation. Personally and from their business. And that was for the Heritage Day fireworks display.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
And the total is seventy.
Total is one seventy three ninety six, correct. So we will take out, they'll say an a hundred dollars from Sean and Rita Harkins slash hit track, so we'll take out an a hundred from. To make it correct, so sorry for the confusion. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Okay, this next. Whereas this is an appointment of employment, whereas the town of Rochester Town Board. Has applied for and received order in determination one one five one three dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Which by order of the Ulster County Personnel Director classifies the new position of Assistant Recreation Director full time. At the town of Rochester, whereas the position has been allocated as being in the competitive class of the Classified Civil Service. Effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Whereas the town of Rochester Town Board has been supplied a certi, certification of eligible by the Ulster County Personnel Department. Which contains one eligible name. And whereas the town of Rochester Town Board takes no action on such eligible person. Therefore, the town of Rochester Town Board resolves to propose the hiring of Bethany Dennons. To the position of Assistant Recreation Director provisional. At an hourly wage of seventeen dollars per hour for thirty five hours per week, effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Subject to submittal and approval by the Ulster County Personnel Department as meeting. Subject to submittal and approval by the Ulster County Personnel Department as meeting the minimum position qualifications.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
Questions or discussions? So we created this full-time position, which, uh, is classified as competitive. Uh, we were required to ask them for the existing list. There is one name on the list because there are less than three names. We are allowed to say we are taking no action on that person. Uh, we are allowed to appoint somebody. We have to then send that person's qualifications to the Ulster County Personnel. To check against the job description to make sure that they qualify. That's why I left the extra week in between. So we can send this tomorrow and they can get it back to us by the end of next week to say yes or no. I have no doubt that she will qualify her assistant job here alone. Qualifies her along with all the other work she's done previous to that, so.
Makes total sense.
Is there any other questions? Uh, this is replacing two part-times with one full-time.
Yeah.
So. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. I will let her know and, uh, she's very excited to take it up. Uh, next, this is on request and recommendation of the town clerk, the town of Rochester Town Board appoints Tabitha Ziva as a temporary clerk for training purposes. For the period of October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one through October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. To be compensated at a rate of seventeen dollars per hour for up to thirty-five hours per week.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
I'll let Kate explain. We had approved the person already. Who after had second thoughts about the position, they, uh. Got an offer that offered a better insurance policy than we were able to offer and they decided to go that route, so. Kate and Jeff have supplied this this person's name as their second choice.
And she reviewed all the paperwork and is very happy with everything she's read and is ready to go.
Kate and Jeff, I have a question of both of you. During her learning curve period, would you be opposed to paying her a dollar less an hour until she becomes fully qualified?
Well, it's already being, she's already getting less than what the position is now.
Well, because she's, she is, I know, but she isn't trained.
She's doing two jobs.
Okay.
That's why we feel, but she's already making less like Kate said than what.
I I put it at fifty cents less than what the, she, when she takes it on a full-time. I was going to come to the board and ask to increase it by fifty cents. That's why I lowered it. Um, it's a two-week training period, so.
It is gonna be a learning curve, but she really has four days to train with Tina, so. There's gonna be a lot for her to do in the next three weeks, so to me seventeen dollars is worth it because it's gonna be stressful. It's gonna be a lot to grasp.
I just wanted to put that out there.
That is my thought on it.
That's fine. That's fine. And this is in line then with the other people we have recently hired.
Correct.
I know that it's within a few.
We have worked really hard to establish a starting rate of pay depending on the. Position, depending on, you know, whether it's a department head, whether it's an assistant. We've tried really hard to to maintain.
I just wanted to hear what they had to say about that and what their reasoning was.
Yeah, the time when she has to learn, figure seventeen was more than fair.
Okay.
She's gonna have to crunch a lot of.
And that's also.
I know it's two jobs.
Yeah.
That's also why I put it at thirty-five. In the past, we put training at twenty-eight hours.
Right.
So the person doing the training has a little time where they're not just training. But in this case, as Kate said, um, Tina's leaving us as of the thirtieth, but she is utilizing some of her time the last two weeks, so. Essentially, Tabitha is gonna get one week of training and not even one because it's a holiday week, so.
We'll make it work.
I know, I know you won't, but I just wanted.
She's getting good, good, she's got two good trainers here too, in Jeff and Kate to get her through everything.
Thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. The next I put in as a placeholder, um, I had been. Told by Alyssa that she received a letter in the mail that she scored a ninety on her test for the zoning coordinator position. She was very excited to tell me that on Saturday when she saw me at Heritage Day. I discussed it with Ulster County Personnel. They have not sent us the official notification yet, so. When I put this on the agenda Monday night, I was in hopes that I would get that email or letter this week. We didn't receive it, so. Provisional stays attached to her name until we get that letter. But I can happily report that she scored a ninety and I'm very proud of her. She did an amazing job on that test. Um, next, we've received a request from the E C C, uh, and from a, an individual for appointment. Uh, town of Rochester Town Board appoints Todd Anderson to the Environmental Conservation Commission for a term to end December thirty-one. Twenty-twenty-three and requests the town court notify him of the open office requirements.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Um, Mr. Anderson has been attending a number of their events, meetings on a, on a just member of the public basis. Had reached out to me a while ago and said, how do I get on? I said, you just simply need to write me a letter, uh. And finally did write me the letter and, uh, so bring this to the board. We have. This is our last open seat right now, uh, on the, on the board, but we have nobody else who has expressed interest in it at this point, so.
How many members on that board?
Um, I believe it's nine.
Yeah.
It, yeah, it's either seven or nine and that's by New York State law.
Yeah.
It states the number and we, our, our law mirrors. I, nine sticks in my head, but it could be seven. I'm sorry, I don't remember, but I, that, we have one empty seat and, and he is applying, so. Did I get a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just say that twenty-twenty-one's been a very good year fulfilling, uh, the open positions and, uh, councils and committees across the town.
Yes. Uh, you know, our historic preservation is almost full and that's a first. It has never been almost full. Uh, setting a public hearing, town of Rochester Town Board sets public hearing to hear comments regarding the twenty-twenty-two. Town of Rochester budget to be held Thursday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty P M. At the Herald-Lookton Community Center, Fifteenth Tobacco Road, Acquah, New York, one-two-four-four. November regular meeting will immediately follow the public hearing. The town board requests the town court post an average. Will notice of such public hearing.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the E C C is on.
Thank you. So that's, just puts pressure on us to make sure we get that done by the twenty-eighth. So we can then publish the preliminary budget. Next, uh, there are some budget modifications that I've outlined for you, general and highway, um, they're in the back of your packet. Um, there's a column that is shaded that is, those are the ones that have changed. So the first column is the, the final budget that was adopted. And then in the case of the general fund, there've been. This is our third amendment for the year. In the case of the highway, it's our second amendment. I could walk you through them. They do, if you look at the back, they do zero balance out. In the case of the highway. I have utilized, uh, you remember, we, we had a hundred and ten thousand dollar bond that we had. Uh, planned to pay off two thousand and we paid off the entire amount. Uh, I pulled the additional forty thousand out of fund balance. We won't, we will know by the end of the year whether we need to use that or not, if there's, there's extra money left at the end of the year that. There's more revenue than expenditures, then that won't be utilized.
That was a hundred and thirteen thousand, is that correct? Hundred and thirteen, we paid off seventy.
Hundred and ten, hundred and ten.
I thought there was an odd number.
No, there was a hundred and ten and we were scheduled to pay off seventy thousand.
I know.
And then there was another one. That we paid off, uh. To round it off, we did pay it off an additional thousand and something, and that's where the odd number comes from, the. Um, we paid off, uh, sorry, I'm looking at general fund. It's, uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five was, we had budgeted seventy and we paid off seventy-one, one sixty-five. So we have paid off. Events this year. A hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And what we have remaining then at this point is, uh, seventy thousand. Plus new ban that we took out for the Mill Hook Bridge, the hundred and fifty, so we have two hundred and twenty thousand outstanding debt. And we started the year with, uh. Two hundred and fifty-one, one sixty-five, so we have paid down some of our debt, even though we took out another ban. And all this is still carryover from the, uh, the fact that. Back in two thousand eighteen, the, the revenue of the chips line was budgeted, but not the, uh. Not the expenditures, so. And then the other was, uh, a ban for, uh, highway improvements and, and, uh. And I believe a vehicle. Yeah. And then we also, uh, we, we are, have paid three of the five years for the two trucks that we bought in two thousand eighteen, fifteen or nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. We have paid off, uh. Three of those five and we have budgeted for next year for the, uh, fourth payment and that will be paid off in twenty-twenty-three.
We're budgeting also for the two fifty-one, for two thirty-one, two thirty-one or fifty-one, I can't remember.
Uh, yes, we'll, we'll be paying off, I, I don't remember what, how much I put in the budget to pay that off. We won't pay it off in its entirety next year. We'll pay off a significant portion of it.
Yeah.
Hey, and remember too, we, we repurchased those at a zero-point-seven-five interest rate, so the interest is, uh. Considerably less than what was paid last year.
Yes.
But I just wanted to explain, uh, where that money came from. The other where, um. We didn't, the beginning of the year, we didn't use near as much for snow removal as I anticipated. So we've moved some money from snow removal to work on the roads because Jeff did more work on the roads than he planned on. Because we got more chips money than we planned on, so. One leads to the other.
Salt prices this year. What's my question every year this time? How much is salt price?
Hope to be the same, seventy-six dollars a ton.
Yeah, we did have to purchase a small amount of sand that should get us through the rest of the year, uh. We originally budgeted eighteen thousand, uh, we've now raised it to twenty-two thousand. Um, we've spent about twenty thousand seventy-something, I believe.
That's at last year's bid or is this year at the seven fifty a ton?
Uh, the new stuff, was it this year's bid? Because that went into effect.
Seven fifty, yes.
The new stuff we bought, the old stuff that we bought earlier in the year was at the old price. The new price went in effect as of August or Sep- July?
July.
July first.
Yeah, okay.
And we did bid that this year for a two-year cycle as opposed to one.
Yeah.
So we're locked into that sand price for two years. But we still, we still continue to pay less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year for sand. And we continue to get fifty-six thousand plus for the rental of the solar.
Talk about sand and salt makes it on the beach.
Um, so with all that, yeah, if nobody has any questions, uh, we'll go ahead and say upon recommendation, the town supervisor in the capacity as budget officer. Town of Rochester Town Board authorizes bu- budget modifications for the twenty-twenty-one general fund and twenty-twenty-one highway fund as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are in the, in the black on both our funds for the year, so good news. Um, next, we, we received our benefits package, uh, from. The, uh, insurance company for health insurance for the year. There are several, your papers put together, there's quite a bit in here, but, uh. The page that is most important to us. Page six. Um, the first column is our existing plan. And then the second column is their renewal recommendation. They also give us all these other options. But they are recommending that we stay with the silver eight package. It's planned and had for quite some time. Everybody seems to. Be satisfied with, uh, what it pays. So I'm asking for a on recommendation, the town supervisor. Town of Rochester Town Board accepts the small employer benefits package with enrollment of qualified town employees, spouses, families. In the M V P Liberty Silver Eight Health Plan, effective December first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. As presented by Marshall and Sterling Group Benefits and authorized the supervisor to sign the agreement. Uh, there is a five percent increase since last year, which is not too bad. And I've outlined the increase of each policy, uh. We also, because of changes in personnel, we possibly will have a decrease in the number of people that will, uh. Be enrolled in the program next year, so actually. I'm anticipating that we will have a, a, a cost lessening of our insurance bill in our budget.
Is this presented to the employees prior to our approval or only after?
No, we approve it and then the employees are presented it sometime in October, which is why I'm here tonight. It takes effect December first.
Right, I know.
So we have to approve the package and then they put together a packet for all the employees. We have an orientation meeting. Last year, we'd had to do it by Zoom. This year, I don't know if they will come in person or it will be by Zoom. Where they present to all the eligible employees. And they, they go over all the changes. There are very few changes this, um, the deductible remains the same. So this first resolution is just to approve the package itself. Are there any other questions? Looking at it, I would agree. I've, I've looked through all the other options and I would. With their recommendation that this staying with the same plan, and this is a plan that many other municipalities are holding.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, authorizing supervisor to recite, sign a renewal of the M V P Select Care Health Reimbursement Account. On recommendation, the town supervisor, the town of Rochester accepts the small employer benefits package with enrollment of qualified town. Employees, spouses, families in the M V P Select Care Health Reimbursement Account. Effective December one, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. As presented by Marshall and Sterling Group and authorized the supervisor to sign the agreement. This is the forty, twenty, forty split that we do with them, uh, because it's a high deductible plan. We pay the first forty percent of the deductible, then the employee is responsible for the middle twenty. And then we pay the second forty percent. Most of our employees. Use the first forty, only a few actually get into the second forty, uh. And some of our employees don't even use the first forty. But.
I'll make the motion.
My second.
The pricing is the same as last year. Uh, it actually went down from two years ago. The per, per month, per participant and the, the deductibles are the same. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And next, this is for the flexible spending account. Uh, upon recommendation, town supervisor, the town of Rochester makes offer to employees the opportunity. To enroll in the M V P Select Care Flexible Spending Account Health F S A. In amount up to two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year with a grace period of two and a half months after the end of the planning year to utilize all funds. Effective December one, twenty twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. As presented by Marshall and Sterling Group Benefits and authorized the supervisor to sign the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. A second.
This is the optional flexible spending plan. We have about six or eight employees who do this. This covers out-of-pocket expenses. And it's self-directed. They can pick how much they want to put in. Uh, it comes either check weekly. It becomes a, a flexible spending account and it's drawn down by them. Uh, it also covers the, the twenty percent middle. So if, say they've used up their forty and they have an FSA account. When the twenty percent comes, it doesn't get billed to them. Just on the account. So it works really nice.
Mike, how, how do we communicate the FSA to our employees?
Through that group meeting that we have.
Okay. Cause like I said, uh, you know, uh, it's more than just that. It's a, it's a major tax deduction. There's other things that usually go along with it. Childcare deductions. There's, there's a lot.
You can have membership to a gym. It'll pay for, there's all kinds of things.
But, but it's a big tax savings because it's a dollar for dollar tax savings for the employees.
And any employee can.
Any employee, whether, whether you are it, whether you are eligible for the other plan or not, any employee can sign up for the flexible spending plan. And then we, we pay the two fifty a month for them to join. And then they, weekly, they determine how much they want to put into it. We do have one employee this year who is not covered under our plan. Who is doing it.
Smart.
And we've made it available. We don't have as many people taking it on as, as I would think.
They don't understand. A lot of them don't understand. They don't understand.
Money coming out of their chat.
Somebody needs to sit down and explain it to them because they don't know what it is.
Yeah.
And I ask a lot of, my guys asked a lot of questions about it.
Yeah.
But they don't know enough about it to take the plunge.
Well, we'll try to get Minnie in person because she is really good at explaining it.
Glasses, all kinds of stuff, home health days and stuff. Yeah.
And the nice thing, because of the COVID, anybody who was in it this year. We, the two and a half month is waived. So anybody who has money left in it this year. Normally after the two and a half months, if you haven't used the money, you lose it. This year it will roll over into twenty, they have all of twenty twenty-two to utilize this twenty twenty-one money. We authorize that.
Yeah. If you have three hundred left in your account, it's rolling. That's nice.
Yes. It will roll over as, and, and, and moving forward, that money will be used before the twenty twenty-two month. So. But did I do a bottom? Okay. All in favor? I oppose, abstain. Next. Yesterday, the retirement plan info showed up. I've been waiting for it and it hadn't come Monday and Tuesday. And I said, it's not going to come. Sure enough, it showed up yesterday. So it's not on the agenda. It is in the back of your packet. For the dental stuff and that's a whole other conversation we need to have. But here's a page that is a letter, MVP. This is what it looks like. For the MVP, previously we were, we were signed up with MVP Gold for our retirees. They are now transitioning from MVP Gold anywhere. That, that program is going to end on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. It will transition to MVP USA Care PPO. The difference is this will now be able to be utilized anywhere in the United States that accepts Medicare. That's big to our retirees because the, the previous plan was only good in, in the area of coverage. And the area of coverage did not extend into some of the southern states where some of our employees live. Or some of our former employees. But so this change is a great thing. Even nicer. The price is four dollars, three dollars and change cheaper than the previous. Not a huge savings, but we have eleven people in it. So that will come save us about thirty-five dollars a month times twelve months. It's this cost savings. How often does health insurance go down? That was my, my thought. So. So I'm going to kind of make a resolution on the fly. This program, the retiree starts in January. The other plan starts in December. I'm not sure why or how that happened, but that's how it is. So I'm going to say upon recommendation of the town supervisor. Town of Rochester authorizes the supervisor to enroll in the MVP. Name. MVP USA Care PPO. For the plan year, January one, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. As presented by Marshall and Sterling Group Benefits and authorized the supervisor to sign the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second.
A second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor? I oppose, abstain. Okay, next. Minnie made me aware, there is now a dental plan that is quite reasonable. She wanted to bring it to our attention. If we have as little as one enrollee, we can be in the plan. There's no requirement of numbers. There is one downside to it. It, there's a six-month waiting period. So if we enroll any major dental work is, cannot be undertaken force under the plan for six months.
Well, you can't get an appointment for six months.
What she wanted us to look at is page two. There are, there's a PPO and a PPO Premier. Those are the prices per month for each one. We do not currently offer a dental plan. This will be an add, add-on if we decide we want to offer it. If we decide we want to offer it, we would have to determine if we want to pay for all of it, a portion of it, or have the employee pay for all of it. She said, she said it's a good plan. Bear in mind, anybody under eighteen is already covered under our insurance through this pediatric plan. The pediatric plan, we shouldn't be looking at because our, our silver plan covers pediatric dental already. Kate can maybe add to that because she's, you know better what it covers and doesn't cover.
Covers a cleaning and a exam. That's fair enough.
Kate, yeah, I'm gonna sort of ask if, if you would, wouldn't mind weighing in on this, you know, you, you have four people in your family on the plan. Do you, do five? Yes, you're right. Five. Sorry. Do you think that it's an option people would want? The thing is, we don't have to, everybody doesn't have, it's only, we only pay for whoever wants to enroll.
So an issue with insurance has always been a question of dental, dental, dental. So I think it, it, it's not a bad idea to bring this to before employees. And like you said, um, and they can decide from there if they want to join it. I didn't find myself. Me personally, from a family of five, dental is a huge spending in our household. So I personally would be interested in it. And I'm sure there's many more that would be as long as it feels those cost-effective for them.
And I apologize for sort of just bringing this on you tonight, but it was, it just came to us this week, the, the original and so.
What's the, uh, what's the premium?
Well, it's varied. Look at the second page there, depending on which option we take. There's the four different levels of premiums, whether it's PPO or PPO plus premier. Uh, I'm trying to see what the differences are in the coverage.
The rates that are per.
The rates are per, per.
Month.
Monthly.
Monthly rate per enrollee. So for a single person.
So one of the, having a little, little knowledge about dental insurance. One of the things is about it is people that buy dental insurance use dental insurance. They, they want it. They want to use it. Uh, most people don't go to the dentist because, not because they're afraid of needles. They're afraid of what it's going to cost. Uh, somebody who has a a loan out on dental insurance myself, that's bigger than my school loan, I can appreciate it. Bigger one that we talk about at work though is, uh, there's been several studies, including one I just pulled up from the Mayo Clinic. That correlates, uh, bad oral hygiene directly to heart disease. So again, when you don't make it available to long-term employees, are, are we costing ourselves, you know, first morally by not doing the right thing? And second, are we just making, you know, a bigger, um, a bigger, uh, pay for, for more major health disease? I don't know what portion, you know, it's, it's expensive, but it's expensive because people use it. You know, and just like you said, the, the a hundred and eighty day waiting period, really no big deal. Um, especially if we're going to keep it up year over year. Most people have bridges and crowns and all this stuff. It takes years and years and years to accomplish it anyway. The big question is, is, you know, what, what do you think the participation level would be on it? And second, you know, what would we budget for it?
Right. That was going to be my question to Adam is, um, Mike, as the person that prepared our budget, could we handle?
We could.
Like a fifty percent or something like that.
Well, that's, that's the thing. We would have to decide. I mean, we could. It's, it's just dollars and cents. I mean, we can, we don't know how many people would want to enroll. The thing is, the nice thing about it is we're not paying a flat rate. We're only paying whoever enrolls. So I think fit, asking for fifty percent toward it is reasonable. I mean, even if we went with the, uh, traditional plan, let's say thirty, it's thirty-five dollars a month. Twelve is three, four hundred and twenty dollars a year. The person would only be paying us two hundred and ten dollars a year toward it, divided by fifty-two weeks. That's
the first cavity.
Four dollars a paycheck. And, uh, now, so it's not a significant outlay for them. Uh, it's also not a significant outlay for us because even if, if we, if everybody took it and even some of our, you know, higher family rates. We're probably talking less than fifteen or twenty thousand dollars total out of, from us. And if half of that's coming back. I think maybe we want to consider it just a fifty percent payment, no matter whether it's a single or family. With our health insurance now, we cover the employee eighty percent. They pay twenty percent. But if they want family coverage, they pay fifty percent and we pay fifty percent. But there you're talking eight hundred, or actually for family, you're talking two thousand a month versus, you know, thirty-five dollars. So. I would say fifty percent pay from the employee, no matter what the coverage. And then it's a matter of deciding which coverage. Now, the thing I, I, looking at this. Adam, do you know what, I'm trying to see what the difference is, is the PPO plus premier. I don't see anywhere that it really tells us the difference.
Doesn't tell us.
This is all she sent me.
PPO plans. And I, I didn't see anything either, a quick glance.
There's no description.
Yeah, there's no description. And this is all she sent me with these two sheets. I can go back and ask her. We could always do this resolution Monday night, the eleventh. I could try to get an answer from her tomorrow.
I'd like to see a breakout to see what makes the better sense.
And could we just ask a, like a quick informal survey around the, around the garage, around the, you know, around the.
Every year when we have this meeting, dental is the first question. Are they going to be able to afford to do it, you know? I know in the past we've had some kind of brought to us and it, then you couldn't even use it for the first year. So you were almost putting a savings into it and everyone was like, no.
Majority of my guy, majority of the highway department probably would use it because that, Kate is right. Every year we go through this, how come they don't offer dental?
And face it, everyone's getting older. It's not so much just the cleaning anymore. It's the sorrel surgery.
Even a family coverage, we're talking twelve dollars a week coming out of their paycheck. So, I mean, that's, uh, six hundred dollars a year.
Now, can employees pick different options or would the town?
No, the town has to pick one plan.
It has to be the PPO.
Yeah, we have to pick one plan, but whichever plan we pick, that's the options. Then the employees have the choice. I'm leaning toward just looking at the, the rates, the traditional option.
Let me ask you a question, Mike, and maybe, maybe you don't know the answer to this. If they do the basic option this year and we satisfy the six-month, uh, waiting period, next year, can we increase it to the PPO plus without the addition of a waiting period? Because again, why, why pay half a year of the premium one?
She did say to me, once you enroll, you never have to wait again. So I'm, I'm thinking that's.
Let's do the basic one, as long as we can upgrade next year with no waiting period. And if people are using it and they like it, we'll pay a little bit more.
Or what about doing the middle, go to the essential?
And like I said, a lot of people are older and a lot of the stuff that they probably would need at this point isn't covered under the basic option.
I think that's, I'd like to see what's covered.
It's a six-month waiting period, but from month seven, well, they can start using it. So. I'm, the, the basic option seems like, why bother to me?
Oh, is, is, oh, I, I was talking, I'm sorry, the other one.
Yeah. Yeah. Basic option doesn't cover anything with surgery. I mean, doesn't. So at least the other six months, they would have. Now, orthodontics doesn't get covered until we get to the comprehensive plan and I, I don't think.
That's only fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. So by the time you're done paying, it does the braces cost anyway.
Well, maybe we start with the. Yeah. And, and maybe we start with the, uh. Now, the, the traditional though has a twenty-five dollar deductible as opposed to the essential, which has a fifty.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. Yeah, but that's.
The price difference though, it's nine dollars a month. So it's, it's, you know, the price difference is eight dollars a month. It's a hundred dollars a year. So.
It's every visit.
In dental, the deductible is every, every time, right?
You're going to follow up, I wonder. I, I think so. To the individual dentist.
That deductible is for every visit. But I'm not, I'm just, I don't have dental insurance. I pay for it.
Thanks for the free toothbrush.
Well.
That doesn't cover your game.
What's, what's the board feeling? The essential or the traditional or, or?
I kind of would like to see what the employees.
Let's, let's try to hold everybody. Jeff, do you have everybody in tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
But, but again, we have a little bit, we have a little bit of time with this.
Probably four. The flag guys out.
Yeah.
And I know it's a little bit of work, but you're almost better off.
Yeah, except I have to, I can't wait till the twentieth. I can push it till the eleventh. I can't push it till the twentieth.
I think what would help us decide the level is to know if we can upgrade without the penalty.
I, the way she described it to me is the six-month waiting period only exists one time. Once you're enrolled, it never changes. So.
So, so is that per, is that for the initial enrollment by the town or per employee's initial enrollment?
Uh, she described it as, I think, per initial enrollment by, for each employee.
Each employee. Okay.
But, yeah, and that would make sense.
The basic option doesn't.
The basic I think is out and I think the comprehensive is out. I think my, my opinion is the essential or the additional.
Pretty costly.
Get a better understanding from the guys if they knew how much it was going to cost. Cause that's going to be their very next one.
Yeah.
I'm interested, but what does it cost?
Well, thirty-five. About for, for an individual, about four dollars a paycheck.
Oh, okay.
For, uh, for a dual, it would be about, probably about nine dollars a paycheck.
Okay.
And for a family, probably about thirteen or fourteen a paycheck.
Okay.
Which, which one?
I'm looking at the PPO and I'm just doing, I did the math in my head for thirty-five dollars.
You're doing the, that's the traditional.
I'm doing the traditional PPO.
It's the best that we're willing to go with. The best is called comprehensive, but it still doesn't include everything.
Okay.
I mean, at least this covers anywhere from 50 to 80% of major.
Yeah.
That's not.
And that's why.
You go from 10 grand to 5 grand. And two grand.
Yeah, because the difference is between, yeah, between 50, up to 80%.
I mean, we actually, maybe that's considered diagnostic, I'm just guessing.
X-rays are diagnostic.
And preventive would be your cleaning.
Cleaning and checkups. Yeah, pays 100%, but about a $50 deductible.
Yeah, yeah, but still. $50.
I know, I mean, I know when I go in for x-rays and the cleaning, it's 300 bucks. So I'm only gonna pay $25. That's.
That's a lot.
Spend thousands a year.
Orthodontic, man.
Yeah.
You could get a thousand if you had that.
Yeah.
You know?
You don't want to hear about my procedure.
I'll try to, I'll try to poll some people tomorrow, get a rough idea, come back on Monday.
I'll ask the guys that are there.
Yeah.
Do you want this one?
I was gonna say, right, can Jeff get a?
I can, I can print this out for you tomorrow and give this to you.
Okay.
He talks for a sing in the morning.
Yeah, I can corral the guys for a sing in the morning.
Okay.
Because I won't see him in the afternoon.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
And that, but the number you were saying is if the board does 50% of the.
That's if the board does 50%. I think, I think that that's. We could afford to do that.
I think that's reasonable.
You know, every year, she, she tells us, well, maybe, and then this plan came out, and she said, this year, you might want to look at it, so. Okay, so I'll, I'll bring, Monday night, we'll do a definitive answer, one way or the other, and go from there.
I think I did.
What time is your meeting Monday night?
Maybe seven, 6:30 or six?
I think it said six.
Okay. Sure, it thought tonight was seven.
I know.
Not, not too bad. Couple more resolutions. Hearing for manufactured, this is discussion, so hearing for manufactured housing park permit violations. I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the code enforcement officer in letter dated April 6, 2021, made it down Rochester Town Board aware of violations of chapter 14024, manufactured housing parks. For the code of the, code of the town of Rochester, hidden forest manufactured home park meteors road, Acquard New York 12404. Whereas on July 28, 2021, in letter from the town supervisor pursuant to chapter 14024F, the owner was served personal notice by the town of Rochester constabulary of a written order that shall require the holder of said license to correct the conditions specified in such order within 15 days after the service of such order. And whereas if the holder of such license shall refuse to correct the condition or conditions specified in such order within 15 days after the personal service of such order, the town board shall hold a hearing to determine whether the holder is in violation of the provisions of this chapter. The holder shall have the opportunity to be heard and defend its position at the hearing. If the town board determines the holder's in violation, it shall by resolution revoke such license and impose the levy of a daily fine as set by town board schedule. And the holder of the same shall thereupon terminate the operation of such manufactured housing park. All the enforcement provisions of this chapter shall apply in such case. Whereas upon confirmation, the code enforcement officer, such 15 days has passed without correction of the conditions. Therefore, the Rochester Town Board convenes a hearing pursuant to chapter 140-24F to be held on Wednesday, October 27, 2021 at 6:30 PM at the Harold Lipton Community Center, 15 Tobacco Road, Acquard, New York 12404, and requests the town clerk post legal notice of this, and send, it should say, and send notice to both the owner of record of the permit and the town of Rochester code enforcement officer of the here. So that's the motion.
Are you making it, Mike?
I'll make it.
My second?
But I wanted to have discussion about.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I can recommend those, and it'd be personal service, not mailed.
Okay.
Because we don't need anybody saying, I didn't get it.
And so we'll say, request the town clerk post legal notice and cause personal service notice. Is that okay?
Yeah, or notice to be personally served.
Okay, so this would be then essentially, the third notice, April 6 was one, July 28, two, and now we're holding a public hearing.
This is a notice of the hearing, not a public hearing.
No.
I got.
Yes, so it's a hearing above the board.
Notice that it's done, this is, we're now going to, we're in effect the court.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Why isn't this going to court? Why isn't this?
Because the procedure that is set up in our law is.
Yeah.
This is for the, this is for the permit.
It's to revoke a permit.
So it's not a fine, it's a revoking a permit.
Yes, right. And then if they continue, then we can find them.
Yeah.
And we.
We can find them.
Yeah.
Okay.
But because we authorize the permit to exist,
To begin.
we are the board that has to revoke the permit. Comes back to us.
Yeah, and actually, the way, what it says is that after the hearing, we can revoke by resolution. And we can impose a daily fine. And they have to terminate operation.
My question.
And then to enforce, we go through, through court to enforce.
My question is, what happens to all the people living there if we revoke that permit?
And I don't know that answer, and I've asked that question.
Who do we ask it of to get an answer? Because you're gonna be throwing people out just before Thanksgiving.
You are.
Yeah.
Is there precedent?
Well, we don't necessarily have to revoke the permit either. The hearing is to basically say, I will tell you, the, the reply that Jerry got is, I'm not doing anything. Quote unquote.
Because he doesn't care, and, but are the, can I, Mary Lou, I don't know if this is a legal question or not. Can notice be sent to the renters there? Can they be made aware of this, that they may lose their place?
I mean, it's not, but I don't see why you couldn't.
Well, we send, we send the notice of hearing, that we don't, you know, we wouldn't send it to the people being affected by it, so.
Well, that's our que, that's the question I had. That's why I put this in discussion rather than just a resolution.
It's not required, but that doesn't mean you can't send something out to them or put it in their doors, or, you know.
I mean, this isn't a legal notice we post in the newspaper.
No, 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 I'm thinking almost like bounding landowners when something's gonna happen. I mean, this is more than that.
And I was gonna do suggest that, that we notify all the residents.
I think we should.
We've got the addresses on file from the, from the.
And they can come to the.
Tax collector, and they, we will make them.
I think they should be aware of the hearing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Put pressure on this guy, and maybe that, I guess it's because my very youngest grandnephew lives in there, that I'm a little worried.
Well.
What it's gonna be for Chris.
And, and, and I have the same concern, B, is if we, if we terminate.
You did bring that up last.
Yes, if we do.
I said that last time. What does that mean to the people?
People there. How many people are there doing now?
Forty-some units.
It makes me think about when a factory is shut down, if the workers organize, they can own the factory.
Right.
Could that be possible?
It is, there is a, a way, I don't know what the legal path is, but there is a program, the co-op, manufactured housing park co-op program, but I don't know how.
And they could band together and refuse to pay their monthly rent, basically. I mean, they, they, I believe in that park, they own the units.
Yes, I think.
Right, and they lease the lands.
Yeah, so they do pay a monthly, I'm assuming it's monthly.
It's a.
For maintenance of the roads, and this is what he's not doing. He's not maintaining the roads. There are dangerous trees that Jerry has flagged that are in danger of ash trees that are in danger of coming down, and he's refusing. He has done some, and he said he's not doing anymore.
And, and talking with a, one of our fire firefighters, not the chief or any of the board members, but one of the people that's been on fire calls up there, they say they backed the fire trucks in there because they're worried if they get them stuck because of the deterioration of the road, at least they'd be able to get them back out.
So I think we have the hearing, at least it sends a message, doesn't mean we have to revoke the permit.
But, but we also could have the possibility of levying fines, and again, we don't.
Levy fines.
After you revoke.
So we have to revoke first. We can't levy fines.
The fine is for them to continue to operate without a permit.
Okay.
Um, yeah. And maybe we want to see if somebody from the fire department will come and testify as to the condition of those roadways.
Can we allow the residents to testify?
Sure.
That's why I was asking.
So we can allow anyone to testify.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we do that, then. I think we send this notice, we personally, we have it served to the, to the owner of the park.
Notice to the tenants, I guess.
The tenants, we can, we can either hand deliver or mail.
Flyer in their door, you can.
But what do we, what do we, we're notifying them of the hearing, and are we, and are we asking them for testimony at that point?
You know, that's, that's up to you. You can say if you want to be here, if you want to be heard.
So why, so why don't, so why don't we ask for, why don't we, why don't we ask for, for written testimony? That way, we don't end up in an angry mob.
No, because when you're doing a hearing, you're getting sworn testimony. Kate's a notary, and she's gonna swear in every person who speaks.
Okay.
Could we, in the flyer that we distribute to the, to the tenants, basically say, this is happening, if you would like to speak, please notify the town clerk, and you'll be put on the list.
Yeah, or show up that night and sign and be heard.
Yeah, but it might, yeah, one or the other.
Maybe it's an are you aware, an FYI thing or something.
Yeah. It can be two different notices. He's gonna get the official. You are in violation and show up on this day.
Right.
And Jerry is coming, because Jerry is essentially the prosecutor.
Yeah.
Jerry is presenting his case to us, his side.
Just for.
I can ask him if he would like to bring Will along as well, the fire inspector.
Just for clarification, if the owner doesn't show up, what happens?
Then we just listen to Jerry, and we listen to anybody who else wants to.
Conduct a hearing in, in his absence.
That's legal. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, this isn't a criminal hearing. No, no, I understand, but I just want to know all my.
I will, I will work with Kate, I'm getting that written, and we'll get that notice out. So.
If you guys indeed, schedule it.
Yes.
So, well, the meeting is right before Halloween, so I might wear this outfit.
There you go.
I like that.
We can all.
Your RBG.
All right.
So very European.
Yes.
Okay, so the resolution as read, except.
Amendment for persons.
So, and the, and the court isn't posting legal notice then.
No.
So this, request the town clerk.
Now, we going to have it?
Send, or request the town clerk, initiate personal notice.
Personal service.
Personal service. So the last line will say, and request the town clerk, initiate personal service notice to both the owner of record of the permit and the town of Rochester code enforcement officer of the hearing. And to send notice of the hearing to the residents of the park.
Yeah, so we're gonna mail that, Tom?
I'm thinking going along and putting it in their doors.
My question is, my question is, who do we delegate that to, and we put them in a, in a.
Of the constable.
There we go. And the.
They will deliver the other one, yeah, the personal service.
Is the person local?
Now, he is not. Now, the other personal service, though, the way it was read is, we, we delivered it to the manager. And I will tell you, the, the owner had it within 20 minutes, because he was calling me 20 minutes after the manager got it. He's in Brooklyn, the owner.
So you're probably gonna have to pay process server.
Okay.
Do it. I, I, I don't want.
You want it.
We'll do that.
Any eye on dotted or key on crossed. I'd rather you did extra to make sure.
We could have the constable serve the manager and still have him served in Brooklyn as well.
Yeah, that's what.
Both sides are served.
I like that idea.
And I can give you the names of local process servers who will have contacts of process servers.
Now, it's P O box address, that's the problem, but we can track it down. The corporation is. I don't have it moving here, but.
Because actually, they should have on file with the Secretary of State, a.
They have a number and they have everything.
I can.
Who can accept process.
Can we look that up? I can look that up online tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll do that.
Yep.
The corporation exists. Because he, he was quick to point out that we had done it to a street address, and he said that is not our official address. It is our, our P O boxes, our official address, he pointed that out.
Okay, but. You cannot move in P O. That's right.
Okay.
Find out, with the amendment.
So with the amendment, I, so we're adding, and to send notice of the hearing or instead of say, send, and to.
Deliver.
Serve. Notice of the hearing to the residents. So I'll amend my motion. Did you, okay, so, Aaron, second it. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
I oppose.
Next, we have a request from constable. I made two copies of the applications, and they have social security numbers, so I would like them back. If you guys can kind of share. As you know, we've had two constables resign in the last, actually, three in the last three months. One, although, had worked four hours for us in two years. Make that much difference. But by recommendation of Constable Miller, the town of Rochester Town Board appoints Michael Song to fill the vacant position of constable provisional part-time. It should be $13 an hour, not 12.
Thank you.
Sorry. That was a typo. No, that was a fat finger that hit two instead of three. On a 520-hour probationary tier basis pursuant to policy and patrol guide as approved by the town of Rochester, this appointment is subject to meeting the training criteria set forth by New York State PCJS for peace officers and all employment requirements for the town of Rochester and Ulster County Civil Service. I'll make the resolution, so we want to make a second?
I'll say, go ahead, B.
Yeah, we have a liaison.
That's okay.
I'll second.
This gentleman works in corrections for the county, for the county sheriff. He is our other one newest constable that we have, who is now working. He goes by DJ, but his middle initial's not J, so I'm not sure what the J stands for.
Who Michael?
Probably junior Donald, yeah, it's Donald Justice. Anyway, these two guys are acquainted with each other through the jail. The nice thing is, this gentleman has daytime free and can do the court security daytime, which is where we're really lacking right now.
Yeah, very much so.
So.
I just like the compliment Rich in his networking and, and really finding and, and sourcing people that already have all the qualifications we need, have the hours we need, and actually want to do this, has been doing a great job.
And he's local, and he lives in Hurley, so that's, you know, close by. He has met all the checks. If you look at the page there, he has, he has gone through all the checks of fingerprint, driver's license, all those. Once we do this, he then gets submitted to Albany. There is a backlog of people. It, for, for DJ, it took six weeks to get the approval for him, so by approving this tonight, we won't probably have him until sometime in November, but we at least move it further forward. And we are down to five people right now.
And I missed, you said that he could fill which hours?
He can do daytime hours. We are, we, we have security at the courts for the ladies, the court corps during the day from nine to four, and right now, we only have two people who are able to do that coverage on a regular basis. two people who are able to do that coverage on a regular basis. We, there are some days that are uncovered.
It usually picks them up as long as you can.
Yeah.
I know last night he stayed until straight through court, or one of the days that there was court.
Rich is covering quite a few of them. Constable Miller will, the other constable Miller, Walter, will be back soon from his medical leave. Uh, he's doing great. He is clear, he will be cleared very soon to be able to come back to work. And he's able to do some of the daytime stuff because he is a court officer for the town of Newburgh. Um, but he's just, he had surgeries out on the medical right now, but as soon as we get him back, we'll have him available as well. So we will be well covered during the daytime and the same people won't have to work twenty-eight hours a week.
Quick question, is there a reason we're not referring, since there are two cons, two Millers, is there a reason we're not still referring to Rich as the chief and then Walt as the constable?
Because in New York State, there aren't chief constables.
Okay, what would a title be that would be?
Well, that's what we went round and round with personnel. Court, D, D C J S still calls him. They consider him the chief.
That's what I thought.
From personnel standpoint, there is no position of a chief constable created. So they tell us their job title is constable for all of them. We gave Rich the additional authority to do the administrative. So the reason I've been referring to him as Constable Miller is because of the personnel job title.
The state, the C J S doesn't.
R Miller and.
Well, no, what I'm thinking, my question, is this normally something to do with the state supersedes the county? And that's why I'm asking.
Well, one is civil service and one is the court.
The state says.
The state says there's no chief.
Right.
The state says there's no chair.
Not the court, not the D C J S, Ulster County, the state personnel.
Okay, that's.
Ulster County has to answer to the state personnel.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
We made that transition at the beginning of the year.
I remember.
It was, but the way we worked around it was by giving him the authority to do. But it means his job title is constable. So that's why I refer to him that way.
To be constable and administrative constable?
I wonder if it was coordinating.
It's constable.
Just constantly.
They don't have a, a chief constable position.
Or administrative constable.
Administrative coordinator, coordination.
They're coming up with the names.
I, I don't know.
That's the only reason I've been doing it that way.
I remember the change, but I just for some reason.
It, but the C C J S, he is still the, the officer of record who signs and does all that with D C J S. That's why the administrative part that we gave him that authority to do. But under personnel and that's what we, it's like, uh, H M E O, we can't change that title. They were H M E O.
Administrative constable.
We could create a new job position and they'd have to write a test for it and, but I'm not sure that they would say administrative constable would then be able to do constable work. They would probably say.
They'd stick him at a desk.
They'd say that person, yeah.
We want to go there.
And we, we like him.
We like what he's doing right now, so I understand it's, uh, you know, in my mind, he is still the person I go to as running the department. It's just the title. So. His email still says chief.
I know, I'm telling you to change that.
Yeah.
Because it does do that perception.
And we also should talk to him about wearing the same uniform.
Right.
Cause we do actually, it's a different issue and, you know, I don't want to go into it right now, but within the court, so. Anyway, does anybody have any further questions? If not, uh, we made a motion in a second. All in favor?
Right.
Great, I will let him know. Do you want to skip the, uh, littering law? We'll talk about it.
I'm gonna be honest, I have not had a chance to hear it yet.
Okay, we will skip it tonight.
Does the primary change the fee addition?
Yes, what I did is, uh, I remember the first time there was a worsening version and a town of Rochester version and we decided to merge the two together. And the version that's in your packet today is that merger. It's just a matter of us going through and, you know, be pointed out something about we're telling people where to put their garbage cans by the road. I look back, it is in the existing law, but it's, it's kind of outdated. You know, that law dates back from the nineties.
I, I think the pickup.
Now the pickup, the pickup crew, the picker tells you where to put it, so.
Yeah.
We may need to tweak the existing law a little, but try to take a look at it. I mean, I would like to get it, try to get it done by the end of the year, so we have it in line. Um, our crowdfunding, Aaron has a, a, a report back out from the, uh, did I get?
Oh, you didn't get our stat.
Thank you. I just don't like social security numbers.
I gave you.
I got, I got three. I started with twenty perfect. You gave me a sheet there and then my paperwork pile here, I managed to lose it, but find it. Thank you.
So I can just, I, we had questions. I had, we, I told you guys, they've given us a quote. But we had questions about it, so I spoke to Jason Fish about what this includes because it's vague. And he answered all my questions, so I can report on what it means. The, the issue that I'm having is I added up all the numbers and they don't add up to the total, so.
I, yeah.
I emailed them because I have no idea. Um, it's off by seventy-four dollars.
I was rounding.
In their favor. So I don't know, so basically I saw this and I was like, what is?
I wonder if they included a tax.
It's like.
It's not there.
Gonna be cords, it's gonna be cords and that.
Well, so, so I asked, so I asked all those questions. I can go through them one by one.
Every time I buy something, I gotta buy another seventy-four dollars and twenty cents a cord.
Here's, I did, so basically, um, what this is, is they, they set this system up for a lot of their clients. It's meant to be a conference, uh, for conferences, so like board, boards, but not necessarily town boards. Um, what it.
Guys, thank you.
What it includes is a flat screen, um, the seventy inch, uh, screen. The seven hundred fifty line item for the camera is a P T Z H D conference room camera that would be mounted at that wall. Um, and it, what that means is, what the P T Z means, I don't remember what it stands for, is that we would have a little remote control and we could probably, Mike or someone would just zoom in and make sure we look like everything's focused and.
Great job for Mary Lou.
So. So we have, so that it doesn't, the camera does not do that automatically. We would have a, a remote control so that um, it would be hardwired in, so there wouldn't be cords or anything. And then there's.
The cords.
Well, there will be cords, but Jason said that's all included in this, that there's, there would be no other. The camera system, mic and speaker says one ninety-nine ninety. That is not a single mic. What they would do is they would install several mics.
Around the room.
Around the room. That's meant to pick up everything and we wouldn't have mics. They would just be around the room.
We don't have to do a mixer of any kind to make sure one doesn't dominate the others.
No, so they take care of all of that. The, uh, installation is completely included and what we pay. Um, the only catch is, because I asked about, I was like, well, how is it? What the computer is like, if it's hardwired in, we can't just like plug a laptop up to it. So typically, um, what they do is this is for a, a conference room that has a stationary computer in it. And they have it, so you just, it can plug into that computer. So I asked him about that.
We could buy a lap, all we'd have to do is put a port in the wall. We could buy a laptop that is dedicated for that.
Yeah.
And it just plugs in.
The other option that he can present to us that he told me about is, uh, there's these things called a mini PC. It's the size of like a cell phone, basically, and they could mount that on the wall by the camera. Um, and so that it would not be anyone's computer, but you would initiate the meeting, the Zoom and the stream from this little mini PC over there. Those cost four hundred dollars.
Problem is, if it's on that wall and the people doing the meeting are at this end, it's, it's not an easy transition, so.
Well, it depend, like you could still be in the Zoom meeting.
Oh, when you say initiate the Zoom, I thought you meant the Zoom of the camera.
No, no, no. That's just like the, there would be like this mini PC. He said that is a nice option because it can stay.
Just be mounted on the wall and you go to it and you.
Yeah, but that is not included in this, because that part, when I was talking through that with him, he just suggested that, so that's a separate thing.
Well, whether it's in the laptop for five hundred bucks or this thing for five hundred.
Exactly.
The nice thing though is whatever.
Makes sense because it's there for everyone.
No matter who's having it.
Every group that has a meeting.
Yes, you wouldn't have to worry about who's got the computer.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the, um, he's, I asked him about cords, about the mount, all of that. He said, nope, that's all included. But when you look at the quote.
It's wrong.
They don't, they don't add up.
They don't add up. And then number three says, this is just an estimate of prices, may change based on conditions at the install. If any issues or changes arise, they must be attached to this estimate and approved by client. So I don't know what that means.
Know what that means and that standard, we had that with the computers.
Oh, okay.
The price rises, if the market price suddenly rises. It's covered for them.
Okay.
That, but we still get to say, yes, if we say yes to this quote and then the price rises twenty percent.
Yeah.
We get to say, no, we don't want to spend that extra money.
Okay.
It, it gives them an out and gives us an out.
I think, I don't know how to do this, because I think this is reasonable, but I don't know what that three point nine percent.
Let's, let's find out what it is and tomorrow, and then I can, we can vote on this Monday.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the television going?
So.
Probably right.
Probably right there, and that would be.
On that wall.
Um, not a necessity for streaming the meetings, but we could put the agenda up there. We, I mean, there's all sorts of things.
When Bob Vandenberg came in with that map, instead of him coming on the map, we could connect the laptop and go.
Very nice for planning board meetings.
Yeah, there's all sorts of things that, and presentations, um.
And the seventy inches bigger than that board, so.
So also when we're doing presentations, instead of having like a projector and a screen, there would be that, something really big and in the middle.
I think that TV is a fifty some, so, you know.
You just reminded me, the environmental, uh, management council has a big screen and it's touchscreen, so you can zoom on maps.
So, um, I did email them. I did not notice this discrepancy until I was writing out this resolution in case we wanted to, to do this.
Yeah.
And then I started, I was like, wait a second. Seven point oh seven, not, there's no seven cents.
We'll find out the answer.
So I emailed them after hours about that.
And I think we should explore the idea of that other. Cause if we're gonna buy this, we might as well buy that other, have it installed all at the same time. And this, this definitely I, does cover, is covered by our money if we want.
Yeah, and so Jason said, I asked, um, he said, you know, because we have the contract with them, the install, they can just do it. That's part of what we're paying them for. He did say that he couldn't give me an ETA because there have been things that have been hard for them to get in, so he didn't want to promise, but once the equipment came in.
Hardware.
They would be able to do it, and I'm very eager.
There.
For this to.
Why?
Be something that exists here. Um, so I do hope that we hear back from him and that on Monday we'd be able to.
I, I will call Kim tomorrow and clarify. That's, that's office manager.
Okay.
Yeah, she's Jason's right hand, so I'll, I'll ask her that question. I'm gonna ask her to add in that other unit.
Yeah.
The four hundred, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. And, uh, we'll just see more George. We love when George comes. So he spent a half a day with us the other day, because Jeremy, our assessor, wanted a second monitor and the thing about them, you call them and boom, the next day they're there, you know, that's. And it may feel like sometimes that we don't need them, but when we do need them, they're there. Yesterday I had to restart my laptop because it was just lagging behind and somehow.
Was it doing an update somewhere?
I don't know, but somehow my password didn't work, so I had to spend the twenty minutes on the phone with them to establish their password to get into my own laptop. It was frustrating.
At home, when it does that, it's Microsoft.
It was my, it was probably my fault. I was probably entering the wrong password, but they didn't know. I tried every combination and I could, because I haven't restarted it in probably three months, so. Anyway.
It's gonna be cool.
Nice job. Um, I followed up some more and I sent Mary Lou what I found. Um, so the ARPA funding for the premium pay does appear that it can be backdated to January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
So.
January what?
January twentieth.
Thank you.
So that was the official start of the pandemic. The, the way it's worded is is in the United States, they were, the way it's worded is at the start of the pandemic. And they, they have now come to interpret that as January twenty, twenty twenty. So we could pay, if the board would like, I'll have Tim run a calculation of the number of hours. Now, the one caveat is anybody who worked from home that we paid during those, we have to exclude those because we could only pay them for coming to work. We can't say they were doing, they were essential employees if they were working from home. And, and that's the law specifically states that.
The, I am curious, I, I hope they don't sound horrible when I say this. For us, though, we were kind of operational till March.
We're not eligible, elected officials.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry, the town of Rochester.
To start on January.
We don't have to, but we can.
We could say.
Furthest back you can.
Wasn't it like March?
March.
Tenth or something?
March, March tenth.
Something like that.
March tenth was the day I got the phone call.
Right.
It was a Sunday afternoon when I got the phone call and I still remember, Mike, you had the first case in the, in Ulster County. So. Uh, and I know because my mother's birthday is March ninth, and maybe it was the eighth, maybe it was the day before. It was the day before the day after.
But when did.
I can easily look, it was a Sunday.
Right, right.
When did we close our offices?
Yeah.
I think it's.
Now, the people who did do the shared work program already got the bonus while they were on the shared work program. They were getting the
The extra.
The extra unemployment. Uh, so.
This, uh, I like it because they didn't know they were getting it. They did the job, the duties and responsibilities as an essential worker because they were essential. This is, this is a nice payback.
And I most towns are classified all town employees as essential. I mean, I, I can't think of any employee that was not essential throughout the process.
Yeah.
Except the ones we put on shared work and they will get paid for the ones, the hours. They worked halftime and stayed home halftime. So they will get paid by us for the hours that they did work. The hours that they didn't work, they've already been paid by unemployment.
Question, I don't know. It's public, but like Tina's leaving, so she would get from, say, the March of last year.
We would pay anybody who worked, in my opinion, during that timeframe.
Yeah.
Whether you were still with us, if you're not with us, we're gonna send you a check. We'll take the taxes out. We'll send you a check.
Okay.
For this amount.
Yeah.
We're allowed to pay up to thirteen dollars an hour premium pay. Now, obviously, we're not gonna pay thirteen dollars an hour, but I'll calculate the number of hours. Um, does the board want me to start from when it started in Rochester? The March tenth.
From, oh, I got you. I was gonna say for the time.
Twenty.
Well, from, I was gonna say from the time we sent people home, but if it's, uh, when it was official here, we were at risk at that time, whether we were sending people home or not.
So, I think March.
I think the March.
Yes, and it was a Sunday, so it makes it easy, because that's when our payroll week starts, because I, I do, I don't want to try to have to go back in peace.
Right, right, right.
So I'd like to start it on a Sunday, whatever we decide is the starting date, and we'll just calculate the number of hours for any employee we've had. And then we can figure out what the number is and decide what we think we can afford out of the ARPA money. I have had more conversations about the broadband. This survey is gonna help a little bit, but this survey, they're saying the results will not be tabulated until sometime next year. So, um, I continue to try to get, uh, Spectrum to call me back. They were good for a while and then he vanished again. Um, but I had a lengthy conversation with a resident who's in an area that he is the only. Um, but I had a lengthy conversation with a resident who's in an area that he is the only house in his area that has no coverage. But he's the only house in his area. There's other roads that have no coverage where there's eight, nine, ten houses, so. My just gut feeling is that those are better for us to try to serve. Because for a shorter distance of line that we're gonna pay for, we can get seven or eight or nine connections.
Where do we, we lose it going toward the town of Olive and I can't.
There's, we are about seventy to seventy five percent covered. I had a conversation with Brian Bell over the weekend. Brian, and I've had many conversations with Gordy, they don't have it there. Interestingly enough, though, they, they were doing some digging and called the, the eight one one number. Who said, there's buried wires there.
Call before you dig.
And Spectrum showed up and said, there's buried spectrum wires there. And they were like, no, we don't have coverage. And it turned out they were buried phone wires, but they were on paper saying they were buried spectrum wires.
Horizon or eighteen two.
Yes. Um, so, but when he told me that story, he was like, interesting story, Mike, cause. For their business, they, I have tried and I even had last year Spectrum. Back in like October of last year, Spectrum actually looked into it, gave them a quote for a price.
Construction.
To add it to the, the farm and the houses there. And they just decided that they couldn't afford it. But, you know, they did come down considerably from the initial price. Cause I called them and said, because they're a business, the farm, they were able to slide into a different category. But even then, they, they still, they couldn't afford to do it. And, but they, they need the internet for their credit card transactions for all those Christmas trees they sell. Cause they do a lot of credit card transactions. And right now they're doing it with a handheld through, through a cell.
The little, yeah.
Yeah. And it's slow and inefficient.
Hotspot or a little tag has a.
So.
Square.
You know, they're one that I've been talking to for probably three years about their issue. And parts of Cherry Town Road, uh, there's issues.
Oh, I know that, cause I get up that way, but. I lose it turning into Mount Laurel.
And there are other, other areas where there's just no. You know, it stops, it stops here, it stops there. The problem is the existing lines probably can't just be extended. It's, they stop there because it's the end of the signal.
I was gonna say.
So by extending it, they would have to boost the signal.
It's a booster there or whatever else.
I continue to try to get the county on board to try to care and I, I, I. Put a bug in Dennis Doyle's ear every time I talk to him about it and. March Gallagher is also very interested in having dialogue about this, cause she agrees with me that the county of the state should be taking this on. Northeast municipality. But a number of other supervisors who said.
Think with the school issue last year with Zoom and everybody.
But surprisingly enough, there's a lot of towns that have ninety five percent coverage and it's just. Their residents aren't clamoring for it like we are. Gardner, I was in shock. Gardner has good coverage.
No, the school had to provide like hotspots last year for anyone that didn't have it. I wonder if they would have a number of, of residents that.
If they can get that information.
Well, they would have to know what they sent out there as.
Yeah, they may not, they may not legally be able to divulge it, but we can try.
This road, we had to supply, you know.
I mean, we.
Areas.
That survey, that sort of unofficial survey that Lynn Archer and I put together back three years ago, we have a bunch of addresses from that. And we have the original map from the highway guys when they, and Larry DeWitt.
Oh, yeah.
Has a copy of that map and actually I have a copy of that map.
But if you could take that and overlap it, if you could get what the school had, then you'd see.
Cause Charter Spectrum won't show, they'll show me the map and I was allowed to sketch, but my map didn't agree with their map.
Next time too.
No, you can't. Not allowed to take pictures.
I thought of that.
I can look at it, but that's all I can do and I can't share it with anybody, including you guys. As I have to sign.
Do we have to play?
Agreement, so I can look at it and I can make all the notes I want, but I can't, I can't take a copy. And I can't share the map with you. I can share the information. I can tell you, these roads don't have coverage. But I can't draw a copy of the map.
But their map doesn't match your unofficial survey.
Right.
Okay.
There's areas that we say the, the lines are running there that they say there's no coverage. And then.
Can you take pictures as a line and show them?
Is. With our contract, which we're probably seven years into our ten year contract now, they're supposed to be building out. And they keep saying, well, we've added coverage to these houses. And I know, like my house was on the, they didn't add coverage. It was just, I decided to not use DirecTV anymore and go with Spectrum. They didn't add a new line in my.
Right.
We added all these customers and I'm like, yeah, but you didn't add all these lines. You just added customers.
Right.
It's, it's a frustrating experience. I wish the Public Service Commission would. Marc Gallagher said, make it a public utility, make it be mandatory for building permit.
This is.
I went up to the Public Service Commission and tried to argue that and we got nowhere. When she was on the town board. Such a necessary. Utility.
And they. Maybe now, because it is, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Spectrum falls back on.
Why should we?
We don't have a broadband contract, we have a cable TV. Yeah, they say that it, it's an added service we offer.
What?
They say we, we, and they're right. They're a cable TV company. With our, with our town for a franchise.
Yeah.
They, we don't have any. Right to demand broadband. And, you know, they say we offer that as an additional service. And they're right. Because our franchise is for cable TV.
So.
The franchise rules.
Three years, maybe we can change it. Well, the rules are.
The rules come from the state.
Yeah.
We only are allowed to have a franchise for cable TV, not for broadband.
Yeah.
But we could go out and hire a company to come in and cover the whole town if we could find somebody, but there's, our town is too geographically tough.
Town to provide.
There's a reason we only have seventy percent coverage and Gardner has.
Rail trails, gaps are broadband.
An internet cafe on that gap in the rail trail.
Two hundred foot tower in the middle of town. Okay, uh, that's it for the regular meeting. Um. I'd like to adjourn tonight, but I do have an executive session conversation, but because we probably won't come back out to the public. Uh, we will be adjourning our, our meeting tonight in memory of Joshua Demarest. Ultra Ficante. Ellie.
Bayettis.
Bayettis, thank you. Silas Countryman, Craig Michael Truero, Marwin Wilt Junior, Rudolph Kump. And all that are surviving, suffering worldwide from the COVID nineteen virus. Particularly wanna say to the.
I have.
Demarest family. Our sincerest condolences as a town, uh, and, uh, hope they continue to heal and. To, uh. Our own Deputy Town Quirk and her family as well.
I have an addition to our list.
Please.
He grew up in Tabasco. His name is Carl Embry. He graduated with me in the class of sixty eight. And he is living in North Carolina, but he will be coming back here to his family for.
Thank you very much. Is that E M B R Y?
E M B R E.
E E, okay, thank you. Add that on, please, Kate.
Carl with a C also.
So, um, when we do adjourn, we will be adjourning in, in their memory. So, uh. And ask them for a motion to enter into executive session, uh.
Nine fifty two.
Fifty two P M. Purpose of discussion of matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.